Welcome. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome. We're glad you're all here. So tonight's meeting is being broadcast live by Boston City TV, Comcast Channel 24, and RCN Channel 13. It will be re-broadcast at a later date. If anyone wishes to sign up for public comment, please see our staff out in the main hallway. Sign up for public comment. It will close at 6:30 PM. I'd like to begin by just very briefly offering condolences on behalf of my fellow members to Dean Coleman, our vice chair, whose father passed this week. And I know Superintendent Chang is going to speak a little bit more and more detail about the incredibly remarkable life that Dean Coleman's dad lived. So we will wait for that. But sympathy to you, sir.
Thank you all.
We'll begin with approval of the minutes. If the minutes are approved as presented, hard copies will be made available immediately in the hallway with the other handouts. If changes are made, you may access the minutes tomorrow on the BPS website. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the March 22, 2017 School Committee meeting as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Uriate. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Any objection to approving the minutes by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes were approved. We'll move on now to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Dr. Tommy Che.
Thank you, Chairman O'Neill. Good evening, everyone. I do want to start off by actually celebrating the life of Dean Coleman's father, William T. Coleman Jr., who passed away on Friday at the age of 96. I've expressed my condolences directly with Dean Coleman, but I actually want to share a little bit about the history of William T. Coleman Jr. and his extraordinary legacy as a civil rights pioneer. As an attorney, Mr. Coleman is best known for helping draft the landmark 1954 school desegregation case Brown versus the Board of Education, working alongside Thurgood Marshall, who became the first African-American justice in the U.S. Supreme Court. Mr. Coleman worked on many other civil rights cases during pivotal moments, during pivotal moments in our nation's history, serving as a president and later as a chairman of the NAACP's Legal Defense Fund. Other legal cases that Mr. Coleman successfully litigated included McLaughlin versus Florida in 1964, in which the Supreme Court overturned a Florida law that barred interracial couples from living in the same house. He also argued a case in 1982 titled Bob Jones University versus U.S. And as you all may know, that barred private schools from receiving federal funding if they engaged in racial discrimination. As a progressive Republican, Mr. Coleman was an advisor to every president Republican, Democrat, from Dwight D. Eisenhower to George W. Bush. In 1975, Mr. Coleman was appointed Transportation Secretary by President Gerald Ford, a position he held for two years. In 1995, Mr. Coleman received the country's highest civilian honor, the Presidential Medal of Freedom from President Bill Clinton. William T. Coleman Jr. is the inspiration to all of us. We have all learned from him and will continue to learn from his legacy. He, your father, makes all of us seem so inadequate.
Welcome to my world.
But again, our deepest condolences to you and your family from the Boston Public Schools family.
Thank you very much. I will just say quickly, our Christmas argument was always, I said that the Brown case was poorly decided. And he would say, what do you mean? I said, well, you know, they made a big mistake. They should not, it's not about integration. They should have moved money, not kids, was my argument.
This evening, I have a few updates to share with folks, and I have some bright spots. I want to start off by sharing an update about MCAS testing. BPS, of course, we're guided by our values of equity, coherence, and innovation. As the leadership of Boston Public Schools, we're striving to do what has never been done in urban school system, which is to create the conditions for success so opportunity and achievement gaps can be closed. These gaps are often measured by standardized tests, which we know do not capture the entirety of a student's experience or educational experience, actually entirety of a student's learning or educational experience. But even so, we are working to close these gaps. As testing season is now underway, I'd like to update the school committee on MCAS testing. MCAS began on Monday for grades three through eight in ELA and math for paper and computer-based testing, and that will go on through May the 3rd. On Tuesday, testing began for schools using paper-based and online testing, and that will run through May 26. Starting today and lasting until May 26, 5th and 8th grade science testing will take place for all paper-based schools. Grade 10 math testing will take place on May 16 and 17. Grade 10 science testing will occur on June 5 and 6. There is a lot going on for our school leaders. And they are doing everything possible to make sure their students are being set up for success. We're providing support from our office of data and accountability, as well as our Office of Instructional and Information Technology. But I wanted to share a picture that provides an example of how one school leader, one BPS educator, is going to new heights to motivate his students. And this is one of our school leaders. He happens to be in a room, I believe. I gave him a heads up that this was coming. He is not in his costume today. Is Craig out there? Where's Craig? There's Craig. Craig Martins is our proud principal of the Perkins in South Boston. And this was Monday, or no, this was Wednesday, Craig? Monday. This was Monday. So Craig dressed up as the Red Power Ranger and surprises students. And this was how he motivated, this was one of many things he did and the school did to motivate students and get them ready for MCAS testing. But if you just take a quick scan at the BPS social media, you will see teachers, administrators, parents doing everything possible to get their students excited about this time of the year. So I just want to thank all the BPS educators and our parents and our communities for just being so committed and willing to do everything in their power to get our students ready for testing. So, thank you, Craig, for joining us. Another update very quickly is our Office of Social, Emotional Learning and Wellness last Tuesday held its second annual Social, Emotional Learning Forum. We had attendees from various departments in BPS, as well as several partners, including Social, Emotional Learning from Massachusetts, Ivy Child, the Parrot Institute, and the Lewis D. Brown Peace Institute. Our keynote speaker was George Mumford, the president of the Ivy Child International, and a mindfulness expert who worked with NBA coach Phil Jackson to teach mindfulness techniques to players on the Lakers, Chicago Bulls, and the New York Knicks. As a Laker fan, deeply appreciative. The breakout sessions were on topics such as trauma-sensitive schools, supporting cell skills in our LGBTQ students, the power of play, using multiculturalisms to support SEL, and unlocking children's potential through mindfulness. This was a collaborative effort of the entire Social, Emotional Learning team and Wellness team. I want to thank you for your hard work to convene our partners. There were parents there. There were teachers there. There were principals there. There were leaders from other school districts in Massachusetts that attended. So great work. A couple of bright spots. I want to start with some students from the McCormick. I believe they are here. Can you stand up? Our students from McCormick Middle School? So why are they standing up? These are students from the McCormick Middle School who are here with us tonight because they are one of the strongest middle school debate teams in the country. Genesis Valdez, are you the, Genesis? Can you stand? Genesis Valdez, in particular, gave an inspiring speech at the end of the year awards ceremony about the numerous benefits of debate. And please join us in congratulating the McCormick on being the team with the best win-loss record in the Boston Debate League tournament season. Genesis, do you want to share why this is so important to you?
That'd be wonderful, if you don't mind just coming up right here, just for one minute, if you're okay with that, with your colleagues, if your fellow students want to come up and stand behind you.
I hope you guys should come up to support her.
Let's go, you debaters. You're not shy. So, Genesis, if you don't mind, just sit in, please, so you can be close to the microphone, and then your fellow students can stand right around you.
So, why debate is important to me? It's a very deep question. It really impacted me with how I see the world and my perspective and how I can communicate with people so differently than before I joined debate. Because before I joined debate, my self-esteem and confidence was really low. And I didn't think I could really talk to people that easily. But now, after, I can speak with people on many different levels. And...
You're doing great.
Debate has really changed me. And the potential that I couldn't really bring out before, all of my friends and teammates and my teachers have really helped me to bring that out in my rounds, my classroom, and in all of my activities that I've gone through in my debate career.
Excellent. Great. Does anyone else want to say something? Do one or the other. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, absolutely. A couple of the other students here.
Hi, Kristen Bonson. I'm the director of after-school programs at the Boston Debate League. So the other three young ladies that we have here, I just want to recognize Nie Hong and Saomi Santana Martinez. Can you stand up, Nie and Saomi? They are the top-scoring team for all of Boston Debate League. And then Saomi is... Saomi is the top-scoring speaker of all the hundreds of students in Boston Debate League this year. All 8th graders, all going on to BPS high schools, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Excellent. So the next bright spot, I don't know if we can top that one. Yesterday, I was pleased to participate in the announcement of the Boston Educators Collaborative with the Boston Compact and Teach Plus, an event at the Mission Grammar School. I was honored to join Mayor Marty Walsh, Catherine Muir, Superintendent of Catholic Schools, Sean Verone, Chair of the Boston Charter Alliance, along with representatives from Teach Plus, to announce a groundbreaking new learning collaborative in which BPS charter schools and Catholic schools in Boston will work together, support best teaching practices and professional development across the city. Through this collaborative, selected teachers will lead five-week, 15-hour university courses on key topics. These courses will foster collaboration across sectors. Teachers who participate in these courses will also get university credit. I'm excited that this new collaboration will bring educators together from across the city. And we know that teachers learn best when they learn from each other. So I'd like to thank the Boston Compact for continuing to bring everyone to the table for these sort of efforts. The next bright spot. This past Saturday, a wide range of computer science experts from companies such as Microsoft, Google, FedEx, Uber, and premier academic institutions, including Harvard, BU, MIT, Northeastern, participated in the first-ever BPS transportation challenge at District Hall in the Seaport District. BPS is crowdsourcing a set of highly-complex data related to our school bus transportation system and trying to find efficiencies. These efficiencies could provide potential cost savings that we can then reinvest back in our school, but more importantly, provide more cohesive, equitable school start times and end times. We kicked off the event with a great panel discussion from industry partners and BPS leaders. Our own committee member, Regina Robinson, helped facilitate that panel. We had very productive breakout sessions. And the challenge will take place over the next three months. I'm really excited to see what type of innovative ideas will come out through this. If you're interested in more information, there is a very comprehensive website, bostonpublicschools.com/transportationchallenge. And on that website, you will see all the presentations from that day. Also, I will give you direction on how you can become a participant in this transportation challenge. In essence, it's Hackathon. And there are actually two $15,000 prizes that have been donated to Boston Public Schools in order to be provided to the best idea to create more efficiency and the best idea in terms of start and end times. So, that was last Saturday morning. Next bright spot, Build BPS Town Hall in East Boston. I want to take a moment to thank the entire East Boston community for coming out to our Build BPS Town Hall-style event in both English and Spanish in East Boston. It was held at the Boston Public Library in East Boston. I was pleased to see so many families, so many teachers. I believe like eight or nine of our principals were there. A lot of questions were asked. A lot of questions were answered. Entire presentation was provided on Build BPS, what Build BPS is and what it is not. And we also had powerful performances from students from the Veronica Robles Cultural Center. And it's just very energizing to see a community come together in that way to hear about the future of BPS. And we will be going back to the East Boston community in a couple of months to have further discussions as well. Next bright spot, already set up there, just in time for opening day. Last Monday, the Boston Red Sox distributed over 40,000 Red Sox baseball caps to students and staff in 104 schools serving K-8. A lot of hats to give out. We have some nice photos and videos from the public event at the West Zone Learning Center and the Henigan K-8 School. I joined the mayor alongside the Red Sox president, Sam Kennedy, Red Sox board member Linda Henry, JetBlue executive vice president Martin St. George, and others for the fun event. Thank you to Red Sox. Thank you to JetBlue for sponsoring this. And it was an exciting day for students. And I know that hats are still being distributed. If any school's out there does not have enough hats, please contact our offices. We'll make sure we get it out there. But if you've been kind of going around the city, you'll notice a lot of our youngsters wearing these hats. So, a few other just kind of school-specific events I want to highlight. On Monday, students from the Bryant School of Math and Science and the Edward M. Kennedy Academy for Health Careers met with U.S. Senator Elizabeth Warren and other elected officials at a ceremony to celebrate the opening of the new science and engineering building on the campus of Northeastern University. So I want to share that. Next quick one. Thank you to Boston Celtics player Gerald Green, who visited the Winship Elementary School in Bryant to encourage literacy in our youngest children through the Team's Read to Achieve program. And then, that's a great picture. Lastly, I also like to thank another community leader for helping to emphasize literacy skills for our students. And that's our Boston Police Commissioner, William Evans, who read to students last Friday at the Murphy K-8 in Dorchester. We appreciate the commissioner's strong support of BPS and for helping us emphasize literacy and building relationships with members of the community. And the commissioner is often in BPS schools. And I know that he's going to be in another one of our schools in a couple of weeks. And I just want to thank him personally for his commitment to the young people in the city of Boston. And that is my superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you, superintendent. And I do want to note that, in fact, it was our fellow member, Mr. McClay, who was with Senator Warren in that picture. So, thank you for attending that event with Senator Warren at Northeastern. Any other questions or comments for the superintendent on his report? Ms. Robinson?
Thank you. I just want to echo condolences from Dean Coleman from reading the reports of your father. And I've shared this with you as well. Your roots are rock star status. And I'm just so proud to know you and to know the legacy you come from. And I'm proud to sit on this stage with you and doing this work, knowing that the roots of your commitment just really run deep. So, my condolences to your family. I also wanted to highlight, Dr. Chang, the highlights from the McCormick students. I'm sorry that they've left already. But it's always so encouraging to see our students, our bright stars within our students, and to see young women especially, who are excelling in the area of public speaking. That having been a little bit of my background, I'm just personally very, very proud to see them really, really honing in that craft because it's going to take them so far. So, for the McCormick students, if they see this later, just know that that's a skill that we're proud of as school committee members, but it's going to take them so far in life. So thank you for highlighting that. Because I know I say this many times in your superintendent reports, you can highlight so many great things that are happening for a couple of weeks within the district. And so, I'm just thankful that you chose to really honor those females. And then I also wanted to just point out, Saturday's event, the transportation challenge, to see the work that your team put together. I want to thank John and Will in particular, who really led this charge. And to see you work so well with your team to build a collaborative effort across the city, I wanted to just tell you thank you. I didn't get a chance because we were moving and shaking on Saturday as a panel discussion. But I wanted to just thank you for the collaborative effort. I met folks from across the city that seemed really excited to partner with BPS on this challenge. So, job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean Robinson. Any other questions or comments on the superintendent's report? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Dean Coleman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dean Robinson. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Any objection to receiving the superintendent's report by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the motion is received. We'll move on now to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have nine speakers this evening. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. And I remind you, when you have one minute remaining and then 30 seconds. Those who require interpretation services will be allotted additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or select a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name and affiliation before you begin. TV cameras will only record speakers who face the committee. Our first speaker this evening is Nancy Street, and she'll be followed by Megan Wolf and John Mudd.
Good evening, and thank you very much for allowing me this time to speak with you. I'm here to address the movement of delay...
I'm sorry, ma'am. Could you just please introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Nancy Street. I'm a school nurse. I've worked at the Boston Public Health Commission, and I'm currently an associate professor at Regis College. So I'm here to talk about the movement towards delaying high school and middle school start times. It's something that I'm incredibly passionate about. And I come to you really as a firsthand witness of the sleep deprivation... witness of the sleep deprivation epidemic that we see in the Boston public schools. I worked at Boston Latin Academy and the School Based Health Centered and cared for students throughout the school day, but particularly in the morning, with many somatic illnesses, particularly those linked to sleep deprivation. Attentiveness and mood were impacted, headaches, stomach aches, desires to leave and to return home were the, the majority of the, of the focuses of these student reports. I believe sleep truly represents the elephant in the classroom and in the health room, as it represents a major contributing factor to poor school performance and illness. The scientific evidence informs us that teenagers are biological night owls, that their circadian rhythms drive their wakeful late nights, and they, it keeps them from early bedtimes. I found myself providing Tylenol to multiple children each day. For some, it was their breakfast of sorts, because many came to school without their first meal. The early school start time of 7:30 a.m. at Boston Latin Academy stuck out to me as a contributing factor to this epidemic, with the majority of my students reporting early wake times due to the early school start time and the long commutes resulting in little sleep. In my effort to advocate for students' well-being, I began to ask more about the school day schedule, and I was asked and encouraged by Dr. Garcia Aronson at Latin Academy to find evidence to support this. So I did embark on a doctoral dissertation at the Harvard School of Public Health and studied the impact of school start time and sleep deprivation on Boston public school students. And we did find significant association between shortened sleep and more reports of physical aggression amongst teenagers. And also, we found an association between lower sleep and a higher risk for obesity amongst adolescent boys. I, along with the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Center for Disease Control, and a multitude of health and public health providers, urge you to push back the school start time for middle schools and high school students. It is imperative that we give all children the best opportunity to succeed. In your leadership roles for the city, you constitute our school day schedules. You have the power, you are our leaders, and I do believe that we need to best serve our clients, the students of the Boston Public Schools, and not create structural barriers that impede the health of these citizens. So I strongly urge you to consider the later start times for our middle and high school students. Maybe with the bus hackathon, you can work on that reorganization of time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you Ms. Street. And, and Ms. Street, excuse me Ms. Street, this article that you gave us, we'd like to make this available as well to the public if anyone's interested in-
Be honored.
Great, thank you. And, and I see you are co-author of this study.
I'm the lead author.
Great. Thank you Ms. Street.
Lead author.
Lead author?
Lead author.
Lead, lead author, okay, I apologize.
That's fine, I'm happy to-
Thank you. Good evening Ms. Wolf.
Good evening, thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Megan Wolf, I'm a BPS parent and a member of Quest, the grassroots parent organization that was formed five years ago during the school assignment review of 2012 to 2013, the process that led to the adoption of the current home-based assignment system. This past March 13th marked the fourth anniversary of the adoption of the new plan, and just in the past weeks, for the fourth time, families received school assignments under this new system. When the plan was agreed to in 2013 with an eye towards equity, the school committee adopted a series of recommendations that were made by Superintendent Carol Johnson and the External Advisory Committee, the group that spent over a year looking at plans. Among these was a commitment to do an annual report to the mayor, school committee, city council, and the community, available to the public on or before October 1st of each year. This analysis was supposed to outline the impact of the new student assignment system on all student populations, including those eligible for free or reduced lunch, students with disabilities, English language learners, by race and ethnicity, and by geography neighborhood. As recommended by Dr. Johnson, the analysis would be the basis for deciding if any adjustments needed to be made to any aspects of the plan. Tonight, and we, we delayed this because of budget season, so we didn't choose the one closest to March 13th, but tonight we wanted to recognize the fourth anniversary of the home-based plan, but we mourn the fact that this promised analysis has not been done, nor have the adjustments alluded to by Dr. Johnson. We recognize that some data has been presented via preliminary updates in 2014 and 16, but these are very, very limited in scope. We didn't see data at all parallel to what was released during the EAC process. There was no information on access to quality for students with special needs or English language learners, for middle school students, or by socioeconomic status. And all the data presented looked only at round one, ignoring the effects on students with traditionally poor access, those in the later rounds. In the words of Dr. Coleman at the school committee meeting on April 13th, 2016, "The updates don't give information about whether equitable access has been achieved." So tonight, Quest presents an anniversary cake, which we'll bring up, to recognize that there has been no full analysis of the home-based system. We also have a nice four balloon backwards back there. You'll hear testimony from members of Quest and others regarding a number of issues-
Right, right back off the stage, please, thank you.
Just wanted to make sure you guys could see the fine-
We can see it, we appreciate it, but please stay off the stage, thank you.
You'll hear a case study on East Boston and Charlestown and the poorly understood effects the new plan has had on demographics of schools there. You'll hear about the connection to the plan to change Boston's enrollment system via a unified enrollment plan, and you'll hear about the effects that the lack of fidelity to this agreement has sown. Finally, we want to recognize and thank a number of members of the committee who, on numerous occasions, have asked for the analysis. It was this body that signed on to the original plan, and it's this body that's charged with making sure that the plan equally serves all children, no matter who they are and where they live. In order to live up to the promises of the plan and in order to live up to the agreements made at that time, the robust and thorough analysis must take place. Based on these findings, adjustments must be made. Please join us in recognizing this lapse. Have a piece of cake, we'll be cutting it after public testimony in the hall, and make a plan for the analysis to be done, a thorough, robust, independent analysis. Happy fourth anniversary.
Thank you Ms. Wolf, and as I said before, I'm sorry that I gave up sweets for Lent.
Yes.
While the next speaker is coming up, I do want to make sure to recognize Councilor Sabi George, who I saw walk in, there she is in the back, thank you for joining us. Councilor Sabi George is, George is the vice chair of the Education Committee for the City Council, so thank you for joining us this evening, Councilor.
Our next speaker is John Mudd, and he'll be followed by Karen Oil and Kevin Murray.
Good evening, John Mudd Advocate. I want to add my voice to the Where's the Data group, and particularly focus on the equity issues, which have been at the forefront since the beginning of this process. I think all of us agreed initially that the improving, the equity of access to quality education was the priority goal of any student assignment system. And I want to bring to your attention something that I've already given to folks on a number of occasions, which was available to the EAC and to this committee when you voted on March 13th, 2013, to approve the plan. Because I think there's been a misunderstanding. Many of the comments at that time said all the proposed plans would improve equity of access. And in fact, as this chart, which as I say was available as part of the planning process and when it was voted, shows something quite different in my view. You couldn't see, and I'm going to spend two seconds, I hope, on just looking, getting people to look at this. What it shows in fact is that, in the column marked Current Three Zone Model, and it compares it to Home-Based A, that the improvement of equity is only for those with lowest access, those that have the most difficult time. That went from 19% to 22%. But if you look at the vast majority of students, 25th percentile, goes from 48% under the former plan to 42%. 58th percentile goes down also five points. The 75th percentile goes down seven points. I think this is important and crucial in fact, for any effective analysis of these plans needs to address not only the equity of access for the hardest and the lowest access students, but for all students. I would say that attached to this, and I'm not going to walk through it, showing the similar patterns for black students and for Latino students. In every case, only the lowest access increased equity, the 25th, 50th, and 75th percentiles lost equity. That was a prediction, what happened? We are still living with the idea that this was intended to increase access. This is by race. Similarly, there was a mixed pattern by neighborhood. In testimony I gave four years and 10 days ago, I gave an example of Roxbury. It increased four points for the lowest accent, but, access students, but there was a 12-point decline in equity of access for the 50th percentile students in Roxbury. There was a mixed pattern by neighborhood, and I would say that any future analysis has to deal with this. Perhaps it's opportune that this happens now, because, this testimony, because in the superintendent's strategic plan, it calls for, and, by, to identify and hire an evaluator to assess the effectiveness of home-based assignment plan and its impact on equity by April 15th, 1917, so in 10 days. And I would hope that whatever is happening with that would be shared with the public and others could know. I'm not, I guess I don't have time. I would also say that in, in terms of like ELL students or SPED students, there were overlay maps, there was a commitment that in every one of the clusters, I guess was the term at that point, there would be programs available for all ELL students, not just access to general education. I don't have time to go through this now, but the whole issue of concentration of students to get programs they need is a crucial issue for the future. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you Mr. Mudd.
Thank you. Next we'll hear from Karen Oil, and she'll be followed by Kevin Murray and Stephanie Bowd Ward.
Hello and thank you. In 2013, 2013, the BSC voted to improve-
Sorry ma'am, could you just please introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm so sorry, my name is Karen Oil, and I'm a parent and a member of Quest. In 2013, the BSC voted to approve the district's new assignment policy after years of testemuning, meetings, and research. Shortly thereafter, district administration brought a policy amendment that would affect only certain neighborhoods to the SC. The amendment included language that said it would supersede any previous student assignment policy, including the one just recently approved for the entire city after years of deliberation. Quest believes that this amendment, which has never undergone any equity analysis, has had a serious and negative impact on equity for families in East Boston. Under the amended policy, the district decreased the access that of East Boston families had to choose schools that required transportation through the tunnel, a change these families had never requested, even if the desired school was less than one mile from a student's home. Residents of the North End and Charlestown in reverse reaped an immediate benefit, as their lottery chances for a seat in a Level One school such as the Warren Prescott and the Elliott increased due to the absence of East Boston children in the lottery pool. A review of student demographics at the Elliott School in the North End raises disturbing questions that beg for serious review by the SC. When compared to the years preceding the new assignment policy, there has been a troubling and stark decrease in the number of African-American and Latino students enrolled, while there's been an equally dramatic increase in the number of white students in this Level One school. For example, since 2010, the African-American and Latino student populations have been reduced by half at the Elliott School. The white, the white population however, has increased by 65% during these same years. These changes will become only more pronounced in the future based upon current enrollment in the Elliott School's kindergarten class. The school's kindergarten has precisely one African-American in it this year, there are only three Latino children enrolled. If the racial demographics at the Elliott had remained consistent with the 2010 to 2011 proportions, there would be 14 black children and 30 Latino children enrolled in its kindergarten classes. Instead of 44 black and Latino children among the 77 students in the year's kindergarten class in the Elliott School, there are only four.
20 seconds.
The, the SC must investigate whether the assignment policy approved in 2013, including the tapped-on amendment affecting East Boston, Charlestown, and the North End, led to the dramatic decrease in the number of black and Latino children at the Level One Elliott School, and how East Boston families in particular may have been disproportionately affected.
Thank you Ms. Oil.
And I have, I have graphs, do you want me to send it electronically? Do you want to just take a copy?
Sure.
Thank you Ms. Oil.
Thank you. Next we'll hear from Kevin Murray.
Thank you.
And he'll be followed by Stephanie Bowd Ward and Nora McManus Vincent.
Good evening. Thanks to the committee and everybody here for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. By now, we've all been reminded of the commitment of the Boston School Committee to an independent, evidence-based review of the results of the home-based system. I'm sure many of us here remember the slogan of the time, "Quality schools, close to home." A database review was going to tell us if the home-based system was delivering on that slogan, and what adjustments would be required to make that happen. Where's the data? Every time that a family punches its choices into the computer, that creates data points connecting their demographics with where they live and their school choices. Each time that the BPS generates an assignment, that creates another data point. That's a lot of data. The BPS has this important data, but what this committee and the public has received each year, or every other year actually, is a carefully scraped, spark notes version of what the district knows about how the system is working. For three years now, Quest and many others have been asking for this data and the BPS analysis of it. I personally don't go to a lot of meetings, but I've been in at least seven meetings with various BPS staff, the mayor, the chair of the school committee, the mayor's education advisor, and the superintendent, at which we have been promised that the data was coming. In the meantime, via the Boston Compact, certain people have floated the now-famous trial balloon of unified enrollment, a school assignment innovation being funded by the Gates Foundation around the country. This would make yet another major change in school assignment in Boston, including charters in the public school enrollment system. No data on the current system, no problem. Why would anyone think that it makes sense to engineer such a major change in the assignment system without any serious look at how the present system is impacting access to quality education in the BPS? I have been assured over and over that unified enrollment won't happen without the long overdue evidence-based analysis of the home-based system, but stranger things have happened. With all these people saying that the data is coming, where is it? Everybody has their theories, what's yours? As we celebrate one more anniversary in search of data, I reluctantly have to face one possible explanation that I've really been trying to avoid. That is, despite its transitions and capacity challenges, the BPS can actually manage data. Staff have collected the school assignment data and have drawn at least preliminary internal conclusions from it, and the news isn't good. In the face of troubling data, even good organizations sometimes pull the curtains and become less transparent. You're right, that's fully speculation on my part. Want to make a lie of my speculation? Then please don't tell me that the data is coming. Make the data available for all of us to see, and open yourselves to a public discussion of the full implications of that information, wherever that discussion might take us. Thanks.
Thank you Mr. Murray.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephanie Bowd Ward, thank you, and she'll be followed by Nora McManus Vincent and Alicia Hector Vars.
I'm Stephanie, and Stephanie Bowd Ward, and I'm a parent. I can't believe how many times we've requested a race equity analysis or the data. I've been asking myself- I've been asking myself, why am I testifying again? Why bother? Am I proving the theory of insanity? Or am I just an optimist? And let's face it, they're not mutually exclusive. I'm going to go with optimist tonight because I believe people, or most people, want to do the right thing most of the time. But why all the secrecy? Why the unwillingness to implement a race equity toolkit or a power analysis? Is it people or the system that's holding us back? We are proud of having the first public school in the country, but we don't like to talk about how long it was only for white boys. Yet we continue to wrestle with this legacy as we ward off privatizers and strive to eliminate the opportunity gap. Parents and community members have been fighting a racist system since its inception. It was parents who researched and presented the data demonstrating how the budget vote would hurt the most vulnerable. It wasn't BPS. This alone should make clear that having a protocol with BPS that creates, within BPS that creates a dialogue and an examination of race and equity is necessary for every policy decision. And I also talk about a power analysis. So when I talk about power, it's about access and it's about money. We know that businesses want to pay fewer taxes, so they promote cutting government and public budgets. So when a registered lobbyist from the Boston Municipal Research Bureau testifies, I look at who funds his organization, and I see McKinsey. I look at the Chamber of Commerce and see that its board chair is a McKinsey guy. And then I think about how every expert, every educator, any knowledgeable person has completely discredited that report, and yet it still lives. The proof of that is in the emails that we saw last June, which said things like, "Deepen the McKinsey work," or when City Hall solicited proposals to "pick up where McKinsey left off," or when they said that the facility's master plan is a response to the recommendation to close schools. I'll pass out the links to those quotes. And then, of course, we have the Compact. I have a very different take. I don't consider that a bright spot. The Boston Compact is a group that operates in the shadows, yet needs a PR firm and lawyers to defend their secrecy. And BPS dollars pay for that.
20 seconds.
The Compact and the Office of Education and City Hall both operate without public accountability or transparency, yet they seem to be driving our education budget, our education agenda. In this pay-to-play system, school communities have access only through this body. It's a tremendous responsibility. When I ask you to shine a light on the secret policy discussions, or to adopt a race equity analysis, or to release the data, what I'm really asking you to do is to take an active stand against the system that's holding us back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nora McManus Vincent.
Thank you.
And she'll be followed by Alicia Hector Vars.
My name is Nora McManus Vincent. My daughter is a K-1 student at the Bates, and I'm a member of Quest. The student assignment system changed just as my family and I moved to Boston and just as my daughter turned one. Over the next two years, I watched friends with older children go through the enrollment process, followed relevant threads in neighborhood listservs, and was given solicited and unsolicited advice by friends and neighbors on what the best strategy was for ensuring that my child was assigned a seat in a quality school. The fall after she turned three, I was ready. I checked the Discover BPS site, and when I found out, when I found out-of-date school preview information there, I began checking school websites and making phone calls to find the information. I created a spreadsheet and kept notes on the name of making the most informed decision I could in order for her to be placed in the highest-quality seat possible. Then I had to decide how many schools to rank and which ones. How heavily should I weigh the benefit of a K-2 continuity? What if a school that I loved had no gym or lunchroom? Was there some strategic way to rank schools, factoring in how many applicants there were per open seat? At the end of the process, my daughter was assigned one of 14 general education K-1 seats at our first-choice school. Did she just happen to win the BPS lottery, or did she benefit from my spreadsheet? Without a thorough outside analysis of student assignment data, we can't know if this was chance or a trend. Having experienced the enrollment process, I think that if I were not a speaker of English, if I did not have a flexible work schedule, if I were not computer literate, if I did not have access to the internet, my daughter's access to a high-quality seat could have been limited. I know this because through my work as an early intervention developmental specialist, I have helped families who do not speak English as they begin to navigate BPS for their children. I have printed Spanish versions of Discover BPS documents myself, highlighted relevant portions for families with limited literacy. I have rewritten, simplified explanations of the process, drawn maps to offices, met one mother on a day that I was not working after she walked the wrong way when she exited the train to be sure that she made it where she was going, and then served as her interpreter. This fall, as preview days approached, I checked one with another mother whose child had been off my caseload for over a year. She had asked me about BPS enrollment process back when her son was two. I wanted to be sure that she knew that when, that he was old enough to be eligible for a K-1 seat, and that the wisdom passed down to me by the village elders was that you should apply for K-1 and then in K-2, increasing your chances of getting a quality seat for your child by rolling the dice twice. She did not know that there were seats for four-year-olds, nor was she aware of the preview days. These experiences are deeply concerning to me. I worry that the parents with the spreadsheets like me may have disproportionate access to quality BPS seats, leaving families without spreadsheets at a disadvantage. I look forward to seeing a full analysis of the equity of the home-based assignment system. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Vincent.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Alicia Hector Vars, followed by Megan Doran.
Alica Hector Vars, parent at the Matterhun. So first off, I want to say thank you to all the Quest people because they're really gonna, they spoke light into my situation personally. In the beginning of the school year, you came, said that you were closing the Matterhun, and we would have the special priority to better-level schools in our area. That's not true. The reassignment, the first-round pick, has happened. Most parents are disappointed at where their child has been placed. Me personally, my kids got assigned to a PA Shaw. It has no Dusty level. How do I know that this is a better school for my kids? I mean, if it's, why did it even close? I've called central office, no response. It was closed and reopened. This is the reason why it has no Dusty level as of yet. Most parents got assignments based on home base, like myself, with first, second, and third choices getting waitlisted. Every charter school applied to, waitlisted. I know you guys have no control over the charter schools, but nonetheless, waitlisted. So I do invite Superintendent Chang and the staff back to our school because the numbers reported, although kids are placed, does not speak into the unhappiness of all the parents at the school. So we have several meetings already planned and lined up. As a president who sits on parent council there, you can get them from Kerry Pottinger so to come out, because the numbers don't speak to what the parents are dealing with. Majority of them are unhappy. How can you guarantee me a place at a better-performing school when you place my children at a school that doesn't even have a Dusty level? And speaking in central office, they said, well, there's other ways to determine how a school performs because it hasn't tested yet. If that's the case, you could have applied the same thing to the Matterhun before you closed it, because the lowest grades are the greatest performing schools. So you closed it off of test scores and underperformance, but you want to place my child at a school that hasn't even been tested yet? How does that guarantee that they're going to have a better education? And from my understanding, the Shaw is not a quality school. So again, I invite you back up to follow up on your transition plan that was supposed to be so awesome and beneficial to us parents that by far are unpleased and not satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hector Vars.
Our next speaker is Megan Doran.
So my name is Megan Doran, and I'm a parent of a BPS student. I'm also a sociologist and an adjunct professor at Northeastern University and UMass Boston. When the city decided to reform its student assignment process, I was working on a dissertation about the role of memory in urban politics. I took school assignment reform as an opportunity to interview some of the people involved. I interviewed external advisory committee members, and I interviewed community advocates about their understandings of Boston's school desegregation crisis in the '70s and how it related to their thoughts about contemporary school assignment process, policy. I just want to talk really briefly about some of my findings in this study and why I think they matter. What I found from interviewing EAC members and community advocates is that many, though not all, told a similar story of Boston's school desegregation crisis in the 1970s, but drew very different lessons from it. To put it briefly, school segregation was seen as a serious problem, but school desegregation through busing as a failed solution. The EAC members that I spoke with tended to see desegregation as a cautionary tale for trying to address racial inequities through student assignment. Many EAC members felt optimistic they could design a better system and move forward to bigger concerns, including improving schools for our most marginalized students. The community advocates I spoke to, on the other hand, tended to see desegregation as a symbol of persistent racial inequities in a system which had never been adequately addressed. Many community advocates feared that this new process would be one in a long line of broken promises to address racial equity. Finally, what I saw, what I saw myself in the public process was that on both sides there was hesitancy to talk about race directly. We often spoke about neighborhoods as proxies for race, and we never really had the conversation about race, residential segregation, and gentrification, that many of my interviewees worried about privately and that I believe the city desperately needs to have publicly. Now, five years later, we are left wondering what fruit this new system has come to bear. Is it making assignment to schools more racially inequitable, as many have feared, or has it become an improvement, as many had hoped? During the student assignment reform process, I had a young daughter. She's now in the Boston Public Schools. And my daughter's schools were in the process of having a race dialogue facilitated by the YWCA. And one of the things that has come up at the Charles Sumner School in Rosendale is that the neighborhood is gentrifying, and at the same time, the earliest grades are looking whiter and whiter. And there's a lot of concern about that at the school and a feeling of powerlessness and a lack of real knowledge. From the advocates' perspectives, at least one prediction appears to be true. The equity analysis of the new system promised has not yet come to pass. In this sense, it feels like one more in a long line of broken promises from BPS. An analysis of the new system needs to be full, honest, and accompanied by a hard look at race, gentrification, and the distribution of school quality in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doran.
Mr. Neal, that concludes our speakers for general public.
Thank you. Ms. Doran, may I ask, was that, did you mention that was a dissertation you were working on? And did you complete that?
I did.
Would you mind sharing a copy with the committee? Is that possible?
Yeah, it's publicly available, and I'll be publishing about it soon enough.
Great. If you could send the link to Ms. Sullivan, that'd be great.
I will. And she's a BPS grad.
That concludes our speakers. Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. And we have a number of action items this evening. The first action this evening, action item this evening is the Consent Calendar, which consists of seven international travel requests that are listed on the agenda. At this time, I'd like to open up to questions or discussions from the committee. I would, I would just like to ask one. Who's coordinating the trips? Oh, thank you. If you could introduce yourself, please.
Yep. My name is Brittany Wheaton Callaway, and I'm the Director of Global Education here at BPS.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. And just a quick question for you, because I did have a school leader reach out to me that they were planning a trip that included England, Great Britain, and they had asked, you know, what thoughts we had in light of what had happened at Great Britain recently. We saw what happened in St. Petersburg, which you don't have any students go. But was looking for guidance from us. So I'm just curious what guidance you give to school leaders who are middle, in the middle of planning trips?
Yep. So we have travel insurance through OnCall International, and all trip leaders have access to their online portal. In that portal, there is a pre-trip assessment. And so if they have any concerns about safety, evacuation plans, just they can submit their itinerary on that portal, and they will get feedback from our rep from OnCall International.
And as I recall, we follow State Department, State Department, is it State Department guidance, State Department guidance on individual cities and states, countries that we visit?
Correct. So there's alerts and warnings. So the, Europe in general, there is an alert. It's just a precaution for safety, but there hasn't been any warnings issued that would stop them from going to England.
Okay. But in each case, it's up to every individual parent and student to decide if they're comfortable traveling.
Correct. And most of our trips, they do have trip cancellation coverage. So it depends on what vendor they went through. Some teachers pay for the trips with their own credit card, so it depends what each, each trip is very different.
And have we steered any schools away from countries either due to natural disaster or due to terrorism incidents or other incidents?
Not currently. You know, last year was Zika. Kind of now, we, so when the England incident happened, what we'll do is we can take a look at the itinerary to see, you know, if, where the incident happened, if that was a place that they were going to visit. And if not, it's kind of the risk, you know, we take when we travel. But if there is an imminent risk on our itineraries, or most of the time, our vendors and our OnCall insurers will, we debrief each other and see what's the best to-
And it, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but it is your office that tracks where all of our students are traveling at various times. So if an incident happens, we have protocols in place.
Yep. So I'm OnCall 24/7. I have an account with the State Department. I have my apps. I know where everyone is at all times. If there's a protest, if there is a holdup on the train system or the rail system anywhere, I get alerts. I can text one of our chaperones. Our chaperones also have the smart app through the Department of State. So they, if there's, again, protests are huge in Europe, so they'll say there's a protest in this area today. So we'll, if I notice that they were going to be, you know, at a specific location, I can, I have direct access to the chaperones to, you know, steer them away from certain areas. So it's a very active process. Whenever we have trips out, I'm OnCall 24/7. So, and we are, we have a close relationship with OnCall International, which is just located in New Hampshire, so we have a great relationship.
Excellent. Great. And this committee strongly encourages students to travel as much as possible and get the global experience, but the work we do now is much different from what the district did a number of years ago as far as the tracking. So thank you for answering those questions.
And that's why we also, we, OnCall International is our new travel insurer. So they are one of the second-best in the field, and we did that to accommodate the, just the general climate of travel right now, so.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Callaway. Any other questions or discussions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Calendar, which consists of the seven international travel requests as presented. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you, Dean Robinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Ariate. Any discussion, objection? Any objection to approving the Consent Calendar by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the Consent Calendar is approved. Our next action item is a minor amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding for the Dudley Street Neighborhood Charter School. You'll recall at our last meeting, Budget Director David Bloom presented this request to the committee. This time, Superintendent, do you have any final comments on this minor amendment?
Chairman, as you state, this is a minor amendment. The actual terms of the agreement will remain the same. That runs through June 30 of 2017. But the language is modified to clarify that all terms of the agreement, including those allowing to transfer funds, related back to the date that the school's charter went into effect, which was July 1, 2012. A little very small technicality. We hope you support this.
Excellent. Any questions or discussions from the committee regarding the superintendent's recommendation? If they're not all entertained, a motion to approve the minor amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding for the Dudley Street Neighborhood Charter School is presented.
Still moved.
Thank you, Dean Robinson. It looks like a second with Dr. Ariate. Any discussion, objection? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Jerry Robinson? Excuse me, she's absent. Ms. Regina Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Ariate?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our next item on our, on our agenda is both a report and an action item. A Massachusetts Building Authority Core Program Statement of Interest for the Carter School, previously known as the Carter Development Center, but as we've all learned, it's now the Carter Schools. At this time, we're joined by Brian McLaughlin, the Chief of Staff with the San Antonio Facilities Department, Carlton Jones, Executive Director of the BPS Capital and Facilities Management, and Mark O'Connor, the Principal of the Carter School. Thank you for joining us all. Please step forward. I will say to members that first, we're going to have a report and discussions. I am begging the committee's indulgence to- I am begging the committee's indulgence to step apart from my usual practice to vote at a following meeting because of a tight timeline deadline with...
MSBA.
MSBA, thank you. I was about to say Mass Association School Committee, MSBA. They do have a deadline of April 7 for submissions, and so we're going to request after discussion, if members are comfortable with it, that we proceed to a vote. So Superintendent, do you have some opening remarks?
Yes, thank you very much. Tonight, we will have to review a statement of interest to seek funding for the Massachusetts School Building Authority for improvements to the Carter School. The Carter School, as all of you know, is dedicated to providing an accessible, developmentally-appropriate educational environment that combines data-driven instruction with individualized services and supports to maximize our student access to learning. It serves students ranging from the ages of 12 to 22 that have severe, intensive disabilities and complex health needs. Its current facility lacks a therapy pool, locker rooms, assembly room, music therapy room, art therapy room, and the family room. In our statement of interest to the MSBA's core program, we have explained that we wish to address these deficiencies in space, as well as expand the capacity of the school at a minimum by doubling its current student population. We want to increase the capacity. We want to serve more students in the city of Boston as opposed to having them transported to schools outside the city of Boston. As the Chairman said today, we will hear from Carlton Jones, we'll hear from Brian McLaughlin, and Mark, as always, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Dr. Cheng. As you mentioned, I'm here with my colleagues to support your comments on the statement of interest we're submitting for the Carter School. Just to remind you that the Massachusetts School Building Authority has two programs that we participate in. The first one that my colleague Brian McLaughlin from PFD spoke with you on March 1 about having to do with the accelerated repair projects. We have submitted those, those are already moving down the path, but this is the second way that we are interfacing with the School Building Authority, having to do with the core projects. The way that we begin that process is with the statement of interest, and your vote tonight will approve our making that submission. Just to remind you that on March 1, when Brian was here, I was actually out of town. He presented the 11 schools that are before you for the roof spoilers and windows. Again, those are moving along. And here today, we're talking about the Carter School. And as Dr. Cheng mentioned, the Carter School is a rather small school that serves a very special group of students. However, we're not able to serve all the students that the district could serve in that facility. So we're looking to partner with the School Building Authority to do several things, most notably to add classroom space so we can serve more students, but also to add an aquatic therapy pool and other spaces that you can see here to allow for them to fully realize the mission of the school. To remind you, we are certainly making sure that we are in adherence to the guidelines of the School Building Authority, so we're making sure, for instance, that we've met all their requirements. We've also made sure that this is in alignment with the work that was done with Build BPS. So the Build BPS report informed our decision to move this project forward. Also, you'll notice that we want to make sure that we are providing the best opportunity for our students, so it's a state-of-art facility to serve those students, as well as, as we had spoken before, be able to double the population of students there. I have a very, very short video. It's a two-minute video that the school put together that kind of gives, it's beautiful, right? It gives everyone a chance to understand fully what the impact of the aquatic therapy pool would be on a particular student, Marcus. So let's meet Marcus.
I would like you to meet my student, Marcus Jackson. He's 21 years old, and this is a snapshot of him on a typical day. He requires a level of sensory input that he does not get from his natural environment. If left alone, he could do this all day. As his father has told us several times, his wheelchair is prison to him. So we get him out of his chair and moving as much as possible. To give him the stimulation he needs, we try a lot of different things, like the swing, the harness, the gait trainer, the total gym. The activity we have found that works best of all is aquatic therapy. Here you will see Marcus being transferred into the water by his paraprofessional, Meredith Immersed in water, Marcus is now aware of his body. He doesn't need to rock in his chair to feel his body in space. He gets immediate input from his hand moving the water that splashes in his face. This teaches him that he has the power to manipulate his environment and interact with it. Without the sensory input from aquatic therapy, Marcus cannot center himself or focus on a task. To show you the true benefit of aquatic therapy, this is Marcus when he returns from the pool. As you can see here, his body is still, his vision is focused, and his hands are reached out for the iPad. He's realized that his fingers are making that noise, in the same way that his hands were splashing water in the pool. Once Marcus has gotten the sensory input that he needs, he's able to participate in physical therapy, enjoy the relaxing swings in the garden, and participate in class.
So that was just a snapshot of what happens with the aquatic therapy and the other therapies that the school provides for its students to ensure that they can better join us in what we do in society. Moving forward, this Friday concludes the submission process for the statement of interest. And so with your affirmative vote today, we'll be able to move that forward, just to let you know that there was a hearing on Tuesday, yesterday, it seems like it was a long time ago, at City Council before the Ways and Means Committee, and they moved that forward. And I, Mr. McLaughlin is reporting that the City Council actually did approve, so their vote has come forward. So we will submit on Friday so that we can hopefully receive a positive response from the MSBA. So that's basically the timeline, that we have concluded the process, and we look forward to your support.
Thank you. Principal O'Connor, do you have some comments to make? Or anything to say about the Carter School?
Just that the Carter School, this is my second year as principal, and I was a teacher there before, and it's just, the students are truly excelling. We have an amazing staff that has really focused on data-driven instruction and really, what are the students' greatest needs for communication? And everybody is just thrilled with the work that we've been doing together, and we really just have a passion to provide this work to more students that we feel deserve the best education in the city, in their neighborhood.
Thank you. I'd like to open up to questions or comments. Mr. O'Connor, I just want to point out, so currently you have how many students?
Currently enrolled, we have 23 students with a capacity of 25 students.
Capacity of 25. And the building was built when?
The building was built in the early 1970s as a temporary building that was not designed for our school. But the Carter School was actually formally known as the Carter Development Center till last year, when you all gave us the honor of recognizing ourselves as a school. It was actually a program that was moved around up to four times in one calendar year in the early 70s, from basements of hospitals to one building was an abandoned church, I was told, till the building that we currently reside in was made available through the declining enrollment in BPS. And it meets our needs at a basic level as far as safety, where each of the classrooms does have an egress to the outdoors, so there is safety as far as fire drills and things like that. But it is an old building that was not designed for our students' learning, and you can see that when you see our gymnasium, the hallways aren't wide enough for two students in a wheelchair to pass by, so transitions are very difficult. Students having the opportunity to work on independently traveling throughout our school can be very difficult. If we don't want to assist our students, we want the most independence possible, but what if there's a transition happening where an entire class does need to get by? So it's a building that has suited our needs, but we definitely feel we've outgrown it, and our students deserve a school that was designed for their learning.
Principal O'Connor, the pool we saw Marcus in, that's not at your building. Where was it?
That is at the Mass Hospital School in Canton, now, actually, the formerly Mass Hospital School, now the Papas Rehabilitation Set School. And it's a drive that takes about 30 minutes, but well worth it for our students because it is the facility that we found that meets all the needs of our students as far as the temperature of the water, being at a therapeutic temperature over 90 degrees. There was zero entry for our students that are not able to walk into the pool on their own. And it also provides us with a locker room facility that has all the needs, all of our, the features that we need, such as lifts, Hoyer lifts, changing tables, private stalls for students based on the different needs that our students have for getting ready for the pool.
So the students get to go swimming how often?
We can send probably about once or twice a month each student.
And if you had a pool at your building, how often would they be able to go?
Some might go every day. It would probably really then allow us to individualize our service based on what the students' needs are. Some students would go, like Marcus, who recently graduated, out at turning 22, might would probably have gone in every morning. We have other students that it might be once a week, it might be once a month, but it would really allow us to meet the needs of the individual student versus a blanket kind of policy that we have to...
And my recollection is, it was previously submitted to MSBA for a pool alone, and the MSBA turned it down at that time, but my sense is they didn't quite understand the therapeutic nature of the pool. Is that true, Mr. McLaughlin? Is that the best assessment?
Yes, and I think the way the MSBA would look at, oh, they look at all facilities, they look at the facility as a whole, and I don't think they would generally agree to just adding a pool to a facility that has other inadequacies for the educational program that Mr. O'Connor and his staff would like to deliver.
And Principal O'Connor, what number do you think you could handle if the building was increased in size, staff-wise?
Mm-hmm.
Not staff-wise, but the building capacity, if the building was done over, increased with the footprint that you're on? What's the...
The number that we've looked into, and we've worked a lot with special education and with other departments, would be about 50 to 60 being an ideal size for our school to ensure that we're able to provide the same level of service to our students, but also to expand its scope and expand the impact we're able to have.
And those would come from in-district or students who are currently transporting out of district?
A combination, and over time, of students that are already in BPS. We would love to have students from out-of-district placements have an opportunity to be educated in their neighborhood, but we also know that that would be up to the parents, which is a choice we fully respect, but really to provide it as an opportunity in a world-class facility for students that live in Boston from a variety of locations right now.
Thank you. Dr. Uriarte?
Thank you very much. I was really moved by that video. It was really a very wonderful, you know, statement about the work that you want to do. My question is whether, you know, what exactly will be done with this grant aside from the pool? Because, you know, I'm hearing you say that the building is not adequate...
Yes.
...for your work. So what is it that, how are we moving to make it adequate? What does the proposal do to make it adequate? And if not, are we risking another turning down of the proposal?
Sure. So submitting to the statement of interest, they have their review process that they go through based upon any number of statements of interest that they receive from districts throughout the Commonwealth. Once a school is invited in to participate, the MSBA in the district, in this case, the city of Boston, will collaborate on what would a potential solution would look like for the Carter School, taking into account the desire to increase the number of students. I mean, if you look at the facility, you tour the facility, you understand that there's going to, there needs to be a major addition renovation to that facility. And I think, based upon the MSBA being out there as recently as 2015, I think they have a clear understanding now of what the needs would be, and I think that ideally, hopefully, would be a willing participant with the city of Boston to move this project forward.
But what exactly are you going to do? It's nowhere in here. What are you going to do? Are you going to put another floor? What exactly are you going to do?
That's part of the thing with the MSBA process. The statement of interest is the application. They don't ask us to provide solutions to the problem. They ask us to identify issues that prevent a facility from delivering the educational program as desired. I know that Mark and BPS facilities have an idea of what will be needed, and some of that is mentioned relative to better classrooms, therapeutic pool, art rooms, music therapy rooms. But to discuss what an actual solution would be right now, I think would be, in advance of collaboration with the MSBA, is, we couldn't really discuss that at this time, what a final solution would be.
But what is...
No, I mean, I'm still...
I'm right with you, Dr. Uriarte.
What I was going to ask you, Mr. O'Connor, is whether you want to move to another building that is more appropriate for the work that you're doing?
Mm-hmm. So with the deficiencies of our current building, we also do recognize there are some aspects that really, really do work with our building.
Tell us those.
Yep. So we, the Carter School has developed with partnership with the city and with the district, a beautiful sensory garden that is an outdoor classroom space for our students that is utilized probably from about, a week from now through November of next year. I think a few people that came to the Thanksgiving celebration this year, we actually got to spend a lot of time in the garden this year with it being so nice early in the winter. But additionally, a huge, huge, huge component for us is we feel that our students need to be learning in the community. Our students are being prepared for life after '22 after the Carter of, we're hoping for much richer, community-based options than some of the options that are available now for our students, where most of our students at '22 qualify for adult DHA placement. We want to enhance that experience post-'22. You know, it's one thing that you might be seeing from us in the future here, but to do that, we need to partner with our community. Our location is right next to an accessible Orange Line T station, the Mass Ave T station, and that, you can't put a number on that value for us. We all know how expensive transportation is. For us, one bus takes three students. So each day that we go to Canton, that's three students per bus, and we all know how expensive buses are, because that's all the, that's all the wheelchair tie-downs fit on a bus. So being able to have the MBTA right at our doorstep allows us to be out in the community, down in Government Center, into Copley Square. It is giving us opportunities to partner, and I can think that it will only increase our opportunities as we continue to grow our work as a school and continue to innovate and do things differently and newer with the focus on the end goals for our students. And so that piece is why discussion about going to another location would be a tough starter for us, because that component is huge and extremely valuable for our students.
Right. And I just want to add... And I think also the fact that your students come from around the city, the fact that you're fairly centrally located helps, because they're literally coming from every neighborhood in the city. And as I understand, your relationship with Northeastern is extremely strong, the public facilities team takes care of your garden, the students volunteer.
We have students coming in daily, some two to three times a week, volunteering in our classrooms. We have usually three physical therapy students a semester, shadowing our physical therapist, working with our students, learning the career that would be working with students with multiple disabilities. We have, just today, we have entire clinical nursing class all semester is based in our school, where the students are usually about five to eight nursing students at Northeastern spend the entire day at our school, in our classroom, working with our school nurses, working with their clinical supervisor. Again, just the real-world experience that we know we need to provide, we need to provide exposure to the greater community of our students, and that location with Northeastern allows a lot.
Is part of this process, does this include a planning process, where you can begin to lay out a vision for what a new facility, the expansion of the facility would look like?
Correct. I was just going to add that the beauty of the MSBA process is it starts with a pre-feasibility study and a feasibility study, and it's all designed to make sure that the needs of the school and the program... school and the program of the school are first identified, and then we talk about how do we solve the needs of the school. So we don't start with a predetermined solution. There have been designs of, you may have seen pictures of different sketches of what could be there, but the MSBA process says that's all well and good. We want to make sure we start off with what is the basic core need of the school? What are you, what is your mission? What are you trying to accomplish? And then what is the facility that will best support that mission? And so therefore, we feel that we will get to a good solution using this process.
Okay.
I would also say compared to many of our other schools, you actually have room to expand.
Yes.
You have vacant lot on one end, you have room in your courtyard. Many of us who have been out there have seen, I mean, you actually have the room to handle it.
Yes.
I just, I just want to make clear because as Dr. Uriarte points out, this is fairly generic, and particularly the proposed draft of the vote. And, you know, I think, just looking at my fellow members as they're shaking their heads on this, I know others still want to speak, you know, we want to make clear that is our expectation, we are talking about an expansion of this school. This is not just about a pool, as Dr. Uriarte said, we want our students in this school to be in a facility that they deserve and the opportunity for more students, including some who are out of district. I mean, as a, there has to be savings here for, and I think students who, you know, that maybe, we may be spending ninety or a hundred thousand out of district, and yet parents, if they see a new school in the city with your team, Principal O'Connor, and what you're doing about teaching there, will want their child to be there. So to me, it's something that makes sense. I think, I'm sorry.
Just really quickly, just correctly, correct me if I'm wrong. This is the very first step. There are many other steps that will require coming back to the school committee. We just need a vote this evening in order to submit, even submit a SOI. That's all we're asking for today.
Okay. That's good. Ms. Oliver Davila, did you have a question? No? Dean Robinson, did you have a question?
I was just going to agree with Dr. Uriarte. I know what tonight's vote is, but it sounds like my fellow committee members are wanting to share in your vision for expansion. To hear you, you know, to hear you say you want to double the enrollment and thinking about, there absolutely could be cost savings, right? With transportation alone, with bringing students who are probably in out-of-district placement back home to a centrally located area. If you all haven't visited the school and experienced the sensory garden, it's the best well-kept secret in Boston. It'll help you get your senses back on track. It is just amazing place to be and to visit with the students. And so you're absolutely right, moving locations, it feels like a non-starter because of the work that you all have already done to centrally locate, the work that you've done as a leader to build critical partnerships. So looking at the parking lot, looking at the opportunity for expansion, you, I'm sensing that the team here is wanting to share in the vision for expansion. So I know our vote is simple tonight, and it's kind of a no-brainer, but we can't wait to see the plans moving forward and how we can partner with you and dream with you because this is absolutely the right thing to do. It's great to see you here as the Carter School.
Yes.
Right? The Carter School leader because that was a critical vote that we were proud to be a part of. So thank you for your presentation, and I echo you, Dr. Chang.
Thank you, Dean Robinson and Mr. LaCanto. I think you had a question?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. And just not to put too fine a point on it, but we've had Mr. McLaughlin, Mr. Jones in front of us a number of times recently to talk about MSBA in a number of different capacities. And so to better understand where this proposal lies in that spectrum, we've had a number of accelerated review, repair, excuse me, program presentations that have come through, and those speak to a certain number of specific emergency repairs that need to be made on buildings, boilers, roofs, windows, et cetera. And then the MSBA has several other programs, and I think this falls under the core program, which speak to either new buildings or renovations. And there's a certain reimbursement rate that goes along with that from the state that attaches to any construction that we do. And so I'd ask that, you know, in the context of what we're talking about here, what is the rate that we're looking at or what is the, what is the significance of us going to the MSBA and seeking state money in the context of us trying to get this work done?
Sure. So the base reimbursement rate for the City of Boston, our core projects right now will be sixty-five point four seven percent. So a construction project at the Carter School will be eligible upwards of sixty-five point four seven percent of eligible costs from the Mass School Building Authority. Core program projects are a little different than accelerated repairs, so they also have the ability to try to achieve some additional points based upon green construction, additional renovation work, and a couple others that would likely bump the sixty-five point four seven up to close to seventy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. O'Neal.
Yes, Mr. McLaughlin.
Just quickly, we've heard the, obviously, the committee tonight, and within the Statement of Interest, we'll make sure it's reflected that the desire of the City of Boston is to increase the capacity of the school to better serve the wider range, a wider number of students that could benefit from this, the program that's offered right now.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. We'd appreciate that. So if there are no other questions and no other questions or comment, as I said at the outset, we're gonna do things a little bit differently here today, only because the MSBA deadline, though they would be willing to accept it a little bit late, it's much better if we're in on time. Is that safe to say?
Very safe.
Thank you. So with that, having received the superintendent's recommendation on this safe Statement of Interest, it's appropriate that the committee act on this matter tonight to reach the deadline with the MSBA. So if there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve a Massachusetts Building Authority Core Program Statement of Interest for the Carter School as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Dean Robinson. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Any questions or discussion to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please go to the role?
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Ms. Jerry Robins, excuse me, Ms. Regina Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Uriarte?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Thank you, Mr. Jones, and thank you, Principal O'Connor, to you and your entire staff for the work that you do day in and day out for the students of the Carter School. Move on now to our first report, a request for interim salary and non-personnel payments on external funds. This is an annual presentation that is typically brought to us at this time of year. I'd like to first to invite Director of Federal and State Grants, Anu Janath?
Janath.
Janath, that's right.
Janath.
I'm sorry? Yes. So you step forward, Superintendent. Do you have some opening remarks on this presentation?
Yeah, just very quickly, we ask the school committee to authorize interim salary payments and payments for non-personnel encumbrances pending receipt of external grant funds. This is a very typical request make, that we make of the school committee and the city auditors. We do this each year. This memo mirrors the interim salary payment order that has been presented in previous years. Last year, we began adding more detail behind the request by also outlining grants that are projected to be received in fiscal year eighteen, which we did again this year.
Do you need to explain?
I think Dr. Chang covered it all. This is an interim salary order that we present every year, and last year, we just began by adding a little more detail. So we list out all the grant projections that we have for FY eighteen, and then we also ask for approval for any encumbrances that we want to make on these grants prior to the award letters being received.
So specifically, it's allowing the business manager to make the judgment call that we anticipate this grant will come in, and what you're paying out ahead of time will be reimbursable under that grant?
Correct.
Any questions or comments? Dr. Uriarte, yes.
Hi. My one question is, what do you consider no risk?
So generally, for example, with Title One, since Title One, the actual grant start date is September first, but we do load it on July first in order to give schools an opportunity to start putting on their acquisitions for orders, but we don't allow it to actually become a purchase order. We used to before, but we've stopped that practice since. So we wait till September first when we actually have the grant start and then convert that to a purchase order. So it just helps in shortening the delay between the schools actually receiving orders like textbooks and supplies for the start of the school year.
So all of these are Title One?
No. So I was giving Title One as an example, but it's all our grants that we project to receive for next year. But Title One is the biggest one that we actually do start putting on those orders a little earlier because we're in anticipation of receiving that grant. So there may be more competitive grants that we project to receive that are listed here, but with those, we kind of hold it a little tighter so we don't actually allow anything to be spent till we have a grant award letter in hand.
Okay. So that's what I'm saying, no risk means, Title One is a no risk, but.
Correct.
If it's a foundation or, you know.
A more competitive one, then that's a little riskier, so we hold off on that.
Wow. Okay. No, I mean, I was exposed to this at UMass, this kind of, you know, and I was surprised about the range of things that you have on this list.
So Title One is a great example because by July first, we should have a pretty good sense of how much the federal government is releasing to the state, but then the state is taking their set aside and then potentially, what is it, going up to seven percent this year, I believe? And then they're doing allocation out to the city. So, you know, there's some delay in knowing exactly what our allocation is going to be.
Yeah.
But at the beginning of July, once the federal government goes to the state, we already know the poverty number is being used, so we'll have a pretty good sense of, what, ninety-five percent of the amount we're going to get?
Yes. So we've projected to receive ninety-five percent at this time. Usually, we hear about Title One in mid-July, so that should be about the time we'd know for sure.
So that would be an example. They'll know almost all they're going to get, but the final figure is a question.
No, no, no. For example, what caught my eye is that you have the National Endowment for the Arts as a source.
Yes.
Okay? When we know it's not in the president's budget. So, I mean, it's things like that, you know, how do you consider, how do you measure no risk?
Yes.
What is risk, what is not?
Yes. So something like that, we would definitely hold off on putting anything.
You hold it until, okay.
Great. Yeah. There's a lot of uncertainty this coming year, isn't there? I shouldn't laugh about that. That's, I'm laughing at the irony of the fact that so many of those are.
Oh, yeah, it's incredible.
Question. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. The committee looks forward to taking action on this item at our next meeting. We'll move on to our next report, the BPS Wellness Policy Annual Report for School Year Two Thousand Fifteen Sixteen. This time Assistant Superintendent for Social Emotional Learning and Wellness, Emilio Nieves, has joined us. Thank you. And Executive Director of Health and Wellness, Jill Carter. Welcome to you both. Superintendent, do you first have some opening comments?
Yes, thank you. Tonight, our Health and Wellness Department, which is now part of our Office of Social Emotional Learning and Wellness, will provide information contained in its annual report for the district's wellness policy. The presentation will outline the progress on the implementation of policy from school years two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, to two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen. It'll identify bright spots, challenges. It will also emphasize cross-sectional, cross-section, I apologize. It will also emphasize the cross-section of physical wellness, social wellness, and emotional wellness. And these efforts are obviously to help our students become healthy individuals in multiple facets of their lives. BPS should be very proud that we aim to be one of the healthiest school districts in the country by actively promoting social, emotional, and physical wellness for all our students to support both their healthy development and readiness to learn. Jill and Amal will lead in our conversation. I know some of our partners are also with us as well. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, Dr. Chang. Good evening, Chairman O'Neal, Superintendent Chang, and school committee members. We want to thank you first for this opportunity to present the District Wellness Council Annual Report on the Implementation of the BPS District Wellness Policy for School Year Fifteen Sixteen. School committee members should have received the full report as well as a summary of that wellness policy. We're presenting this report on behalf of the District Wellness Council, and that council is a superintendent-appointed council composed of district and school staff, community members, and parents. And I want to thank all the members of the District Wellness Council that volunteer their time to do this very important work. I'd like to give a special thanks tonight to Dr. Nguyen Nguyen, who's the Medical Director of the Boston Public Health Commission, who co-chairs the committee with me, and I've had the pleasure and honor to serve with him as co-chair now for the last two years. I want to also extend our gratitude to Dean Robinson for participating on this council. And if you'll go to the next slide, Jill, I'd like to acknowledge the co-chairs of the seven policy area subcommittees that do the additional work of monitoring and reporting on policy implementation, advising on communication, and implementation of strategies, and recommending policy updates. And their names are listed all on the slides up there, and I do want to recognize some of the members of the Wellness Council who are here with us tonight, and that's Ms. Anne McHugh from the Boston Public Health Commission, Pat Santin, Jessica Green, Laura Benavides, Tommy Welch, Marika Lear, Katia Miller, Kelly Walsh, Avery Azdal, and Mr. John Riordan. As you can see, implementing the wellness policy requires collaboration across operations, the asset team, Salwell, Equity, and many, many, many external partners. And we're very proud of this collaborative effort underway to create safe, healthy, and welcoming school environments for all of our students. We're gonna share our findings tonight and then return in June to share recommendations for policy updates. And now I'm gonna turn the presentation over to Jill Carter, Executive Director for Salwell.
Thank you very much, Amalio, and I too want to just thank all the District Wellness Council members and subcommittee co-chairs because this really takes an enormous coordination and cooperation and a lot of work. So thank you very much. So I'm gonna turn to tell you just what our objectives are. We have four of them for this presentation. We want to provide a brief overview of the policy components, describe our theory of action and how this work aligns with other district priorities. We want to present where we are in the progress towards policy implementation from our baseline quantitative report in School Year Thirteen Fourteen to School Year Fifteen Sixteen. We'll share a few bright spots and challenges from the report, and finally, we'll provide recommendations for further implementation of the district wellness policy. The Boston Public Schools strives to be one of the healthiest school districts in the country, and our mission is to actively promote the health and wellness of all students to support both their healthy development and readiness to learn. The wellness policy supports this mission. We absolutely, I'm sorry, we absolutely know that healthier students are better learners. Research clearly indicates that health inequities interfere with learning and disproportionately impact low-income youth of color. In order to close the access and achievement gaps, we must address health inequities. Wellness is a key strategy for the district. The superintendent's Strategic Implementation Plan prioritizes the development of the whole child. The instructional vision states that educators will create safe, healthy, and welcoming learning environments. The wellness policy strives to ensure equity of programs and services for all students, addressing the needs of our most marginalized students. This goes to the heart of the BPS problem of practice. In framing the wellness policy, we have found that it's very important to clarify what we mean by wellness. We see wellness as including physical, social, and emotional elements, and according to the Massachusetts Standards for School Wellness Councils, wellness is a process by which individuals move towards optimal physical and mental health, regardless of their current health status or disability, by practicing healthy choices within an environment that encourages healthy decision-making. The BPS Wellness Policy has been nationally recognized as one of the most comprehensive in the country. Other districts, including DC, Chicago, and LA, have modeled their policies after ours. The policy was last updated in two thousand thirteen and is aligned with the whole school, whole community, whole child approach. The BPS policy links existing and new district health-related policies in eight policy components that are listed on the slide. Our wellness policy creates the roadmap for ensuring that all BPS schools are safe, healthy, and welcoming. We are especially focused on four educationally relevant health issues: obesity, asthma, sexual health, and behavioral health. Here on this slide, we've used the issue of obesity. Here on this slide, we've used the issue of obesity to illuminate our theory of action. The policies provide the guidance on how to create a healthy environment and safe and welcoming schools, school climates, where the healthy choice is the easy choice. It also spells out the tiered programs and services needed so that students are learning how to make those choices. Ultimately, we believe this will lead to healthier student outcomes. This truly is a whole-school approach to address the whole child. On the next slide, I'd like to point out that on the right in orange, we are outlining the infrastructure used to implement the wellness policy, and in blue, we're, we outline the framework we use for measuring the policy implementation. The District Wellness Council's role is to assess, recommend, and revise health-related policies in the district. BPS central office departments and community partners work cohesively to support schools in implementing the eight policy components. Each BPS school must also have a wellness council that should annually write a wellness action plan as a part of their quality school plan. The District Wellness Council sees change at the school level as one of the most, of the precursors for change at the student level. The Wellness Policy Evaluation Plan identified at least three school-level metrics and at least three student-level metrics for each of the eight policy areas. School-level outcomes measure policy implementation and compliance, whereas student-level outcomes tell us about students' health status and how, about how students themselves gauge their safety, health, and behaviors. Our report mainly focuses on the school-level outcomes, though we will share some data on student health. So where are we now with policy implementation and what progress have we made? In school year 1516, the various components of the policy fell in different places on our policy implementation spectrum. Healthy school environment, health services, and safe support, safe and supportive metrics indicate these areas are closest to full implementation. In school year 1516, higher response rates improved our accuracy in measuring policy implementation, which may explain why some policy areas fell lower on the continuum than in the previous year. What is most impressive, though, is that we saw improvements in nearly all areas of the policy when comparing the school year 1516 findings to the baseline metrics, and that, the green triangles show the areas with improvement. Comprehensive health education and staff wellness have seen little change, and there was a decrease in the wellness action plan submissions and physical activity offered in schools. The full report details many efforts underway to continue to move toward full implementation of all the areas. What I'd like to do next is share bright spots, because the good news is that there are bright spots in all areas of the policy, and I'm going to mention one in each of the policy areas. In cultural proficiency, there are a large, there was a large increase in the number of trainings offered to staff, and as we know, culturally and linguistically sustaining practices have been strongly prioritized at the district level. In physical education and physical activity, 100% of schools serving grades K to 5 and 60% serving grades 6 to 8 have recess. Almost all of the K to 8 students received the required 45 minutes of physical education weekly, and nearly 50% received the recommended 80 minutes. In school food and nutrition, 100% of schools met the standards set by the policy for school In health education, there was an increase in the number of high schools that are trained in and using exemplary sexual health education. Schools report near-full implementation of the healthy school environment metrics, including reviewing annual environmental audits, reports, and creating integrated pest management plans. For health services, 91% of high schools have a condom accessibility team. And finally, we have seen improvement in eight out of nine of the metrics to use to measure services, supports, and programs in the safe and supportive policy area, with the vast majority of schools reporting positive efforts on these metrics. However, along with all the bright spots, of course, there are challenges. Due to time, I'm just going to focus on challenges in high school, physical education, and K to 12 health education, because they face similar issues, including adequate staffing and competing space within the school's master schedule. In the case of PE, actual physical space can be an issue. These infrastructures issues make progress more difficult than in some of the other areas. So high school physical education has steadily increased over the, over the past seven years. In 2010, we began with 61% of high schools with no physical education teacher. In school 1516, school year 1516, we have reduced that gap to 37%. In school year 1617, our current year, we have further reduced that gap to 29% of schools, and we anticipate that this trend will continue for next year. Despite the fact that the trend is going in the right direction, and this is good news, 66% of our schools are not currently staffed to deliver PE to all students in all grades for one semester. We will continue to work with schools to address the infrastructure issues until all students receive access to this quality physical education. In health education, the project, the progress has not been steady, I should say comprehensive health education, it's not been as steady. Most schools are not meeting the health education requirements. Around 45% offer appropriate course requirements in the school schedule. However, regarding staffing requirements, only 32% of schools are using teachers trained in health education in the elementary grades, and only 16% of schools are using licensed health education teachers in middle and high school grades. We will, again, continue to work, we are working to provide supports to schools to meet this policy requirement, and continue to innovate with solutions around the policy challenges. Finally, I want to share a little bit of information around the student-level outcomes. Again, on the bright side, the percentage of students that are overweight or obese has dropped and then leveled off, but again, 39% of students are still at an unhealthy weight. These rates are even higher among Black and Latinx students. Sticking with the school nurse data, asthma rates for all students have increased to 20%, and rates are even higher among our Asian, Black, and Latinx students. Again, on the bright side, though, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey found that there have been improvements in injury and violence behaviors, sexual health behaviors in pregnancy, sexual health education for high school students, amongst many others, I must say. However, despite that more students report being taught to use a condom, there has been a decrease in the students who report actually using a condom during sexual intercourse. I'll just end with our recommendations. I will say that the annual report documents implementation successes for school year 1516 and many of the plans that are underway for this year and next year. But additionally, the District Wellness Council recommends for, has four recommendations. Number one, improving communications of the policy and policy successes to schools, youth, and families to increase awareness of the policy and the engagement of staff, students, and families. Number two, in order to tackle many of the implementation challenges we face in all the areas of the policy, but including the ones we discussed for phys ed and health ed, we recommend developing additional planning and implementation supports for school-based wellness councils, leaders, and staff. Number three, strengthening the District Wellness Council and subcommittees, including the developing, further developing the cultural proficiency and staff wellness subcommittees. Number four, reviewing and recommending revisions to the current district wellness policy, which is, we've already mentioned, we are in the process of updating sections of the policy where, which we will bring before all of you in June. This includes efforts to better align our metrics with district priorities and update evaluation tools. I will now turn it back over to Amalio for any closing comments.
And so in summary, the con, this comprehensive policy seeks to provide equity for all students, and the theory of action addresses the whole child, and that we are very, feel very optimistic about significant improvements in policy implementation, and although we have many bright spots, we've also have identified some challenges and barriers to implementation, and we're already addressing them through our recommendations and through some of the work that we're doing throughout the district and in collaboration with our partners. And I want to thank everyone, and we look forward to seeing you again in June.
Thank you each for your presentation. Open up now to questions and comments for members, Mr. McClay.
Good evening. Just in regards to student representation, I would like to know, on your board, on the council, is there any students who will be representing student voice on there?
Good question. In the past, we have had student voice. We've engaged with BSAC and some of our other community partners, but in fact, this year, we do not have a student member. It is our intention, it's just we haven't made that happen yet this year.
All right, and also, what individuals in the school committee would be making up the school-based council?
Sure, we, we are looking for a well-rounded group that would include the high school, or, I'm sorry, include principals, it would include students at middle school and high school levels, it would also, it's required to include a nurse, a physical education teacher, we, we encourage psychologists, food service staff, even custodial staff are involved in some of the schools, really, and classroom teachers, we also look for family and community partners to be part of it, really wanting to be representative of all the stakeholders that would support that school.
Okay, and also following with some of your recommendations, like improving communication of the policy success of schools, youth, and family, how do we also have a bigger conversation with students about being more engaged?
Good question. We have gone before BSAC in the past as one avenue to get more conversation, just, obviously, that's with a, with a select group of students. I think it's really an important point. We did, last year was a qualitative report, and we did focus groups with students, and we tried to get a better understanding of what would, what would they like and how could we get it better, but we're open to ideas that you might have, because I, I think that's really critical for us to engage them in advocating for the, the pieces of the policy.
Well, we also do have some recommendations from the students on health classes, like having this time allocated in health classes, discuss district-wide issues where the environments could do this, and we have someone who could carry out these conversations about what policies are changing, how they impact the students, and also, that way, you all have a way of receiving feedback from the students that could be communicated by the teacher of that class.
Excellent idea, thank you.
Mr. McClay, is there a way that you could encourage BSAC to work and identify a group of students that may be interested in working on this issue?
Yes, and also, I believe on, in a few weeks, we have a focus group with your team about the policy.
Great, yes, we, and we need that feedback, because we're really trying to do a broad stakeholder feedback on the policy changes, and engaging students was at the top of the list, so we look forward to it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. McClay. Ms. Oliver Dabila.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I was curious about the CP measures, so one of the pieces that is on this report is the training, but I'm just wondering how, are you going to measure that, that its impact? And I just go back to Mr. McClay's point around, if, if you could also talk a little bit about how are you getting the information beyond the youth risk survey, because that, that's if you, you know, take it or not take it, it's not a full representation, so I'm just curious if you can talk about those two things.
Sure, so one of the other metrics for cultural proficiency has been around the percentage or the number of school wellness councils that include a student and include a family member. So that is a current metric, as well as trainings. I, we, we had some, this is where, what we've identified is that we need to improve our metrics, and that's part of what we're trying to do as a part of the policy update. Some of it is we wanted to ensure that we're choosing metrics that we can actually collect data on and be sustainable in that process, so that is something that I hope we can improve moving forward. So that's, does that help with, with that question? And if, again, we're, that's part of what we hope to gather feedback on it through stakeholder conversations, is around the types of metrics that people might have ideas for that would, would make sense, so.
Yeah, and I, I assume the CP is a, it's a district-wide piece, so beyond the wellness council, but I, I'm, I would like to hear more about what is being measured and what is the impact when you're going into schools, because part of the, the CP subcommittee was around.
Which you were, which you were a chair of, a co-chair of at one point?
In another life.
Yep.
Was around, you know, having staff, having materials, curriculum be more reflective, so I would just be curious about that. I'm very interested in the impact of that. My other question is, I don't know if it's under you, I assume it is, but if you could talk a little bit, because I didn't, I know you have some areas that you are focused on, but I'm very curious about bullying, and if you can talk a little bit, because that is part of, you know, social health, mental health, and I know that we have a policy, but I'm just wondering if you could speak a little bit more about that, because it's not on here, how we're doing around that. I've heard from teachers, students, that there's not enough meat in our policy in terms of what we can really do, and so I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit about that.
I'm maybe going to turn to Amalio, unfortunately, we don't have some other folks that were really instrumental in that component of the policy here, but I will just say that that was, the bullying, bullying prevention and some of the bullying numbers are, they are meant, part of the eight, I mentioned, eight of nine metrics that were increasing or heading in the right direction, so bullying is one of the metrics that we use here, but I'll turn it over to Amalio maybe to talk a little bit about the policy and where we are with that.
Sure, I've had my director for safe and welcoming schools, Jodi Algi, sit down with her team to look at the, at our BPS policy for bullying, and we've reviewed that, we've looked at other best practices across the nation, we've started to engage stakeholders in conversations and getting their feedback on the policy, and we are hoping to bring that forward to the school committee for its review.
Okay, I, I'll look forward to that. And then I, I only just have a comment as we move forward with Bill BPS. I had the pleasure of visiting Codman Charter School, and they have a beautiful new building that is trauma-informed, and so I think it's just something for us to think about as we move forward, to have that type of design. Thank you.
Excellent thought. I think actually that is mentioned, I believe, in the Bill BPS report about a number, it didn't specifically mention Codman, but I know exactly what you mean, how they have the neutral colors and, and the trees and the glass, et cetera, and they've had, they've seen the impact on trauma-involved youth, how they react to it. I believe that the concept, I recall, was mentioned in, in Bill BPS.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Mr. LoCanto?
Thank you, Ms. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Carter, and Mr. Nieves. Couple quick questions, just about, one, you mentioned some staff wellness initiatives, and they're sort of on the, the far end of the spectrum in terms of where we'd like to be, and so I wanted to understand a little bit more, you spoke about the state regulations that speak to what a wellness council is intended to accomplish and what wellness means, and is that transferable to the staff side, and what are the barriers in place, or what is the plan, I guess both, both questions, for getting a staff wellness program off the ground?
Sure, well, so first, I want to say that I think we're still working on sort of the shared ownership of staff wellness efforts in Boston Public Schools. We would anticipate collaborating with, obviously, the Office of Social Emotional Learning and Wellness, but also the Office of Human Capital and the City Health Benefits Office, because in many districts, that's, it's coming from whoever is working on staff benefits. So we've had some conversation, we obviously are working in different ways with the different groups, but we, I, I think that that's part of what we need to do, is better clarify how we're going to work together and so that we can be strategic in what we're doing. Right now, there actually are a lot of things going on in schools, and we know that from some metrics we have, a lot of, they're doing a lot of staff wellness, and at Bowling, we have had some really great employee wellness pieces. And at Bowling, we have had some really great employee wellness pieces and last year, and we now also have some fitness centers and some run-walk clubs going on. So I think what you can see is there's a lot of interest and a lot of individual pieces going on, but having a real strategic approach to how we do that, I think is really important, and staff do seem to care about it. The city did a staff wellness survey last year that took, looked at all agencies across the city. And so they were looking to, you know, use that to describe, to decide how to go with the strategy, so.
And if I'm not mistaken, the Staff Wellness Fair is coming up, the second annual, if I'm not, I believe I saw that on a calendar somewhere soon, but-
I'm not sure about that myself.
Maybe it's where I work.
Yeah. Maybe it's where-
It will happen again.
It will, yeah.
Yeah, I will not, I will not celebrate that event in front of Tasty Burger this time, though.
Placement is everything. The one other question I had about just plans for the future is, I want to acknowledge first the great work that we've done to close the gap on high school physical education. And I appreciate that you've acknowledged that you've got a ways to go on that as well. Is there a timeline or a time horizon that we have in mind for how we'll get to where our end goal is?
Well, first, I want to say that we have done incre, and when I say we, it's really the schools, right? It's the creative principals with support from central office, but, you know, they have a lot of challenges around, as we said, staffing and schedules and all. But the, we are in the process of really developing a strategic plan to try to close, it's really about seven or eight schools that we're talking about, and many of them are smaller or specialty schools. And, but we do intend to have a real strategic approach and innovative to not only get those seven or eight schools to have some physical education presence there, but also to bring the other schools that have physical education for some students, but maybe not for all. And I'm happy to sort of give some ideas on that, but that's, we are, the timeline, I don't think we have, because we're in the beginning of this new strategic planning process, I can't give you an actual end date at this point.
And that's just good to know that it's-
Yep.
It's-
So, LaCanto, if you could just be a little closer to the microphone.
Excuse me, yes, thank you. It's primarily confined to the smaller schools that, you know, maybe either have a facility issue or just frankly, a critical mass issue that are the ones that we're really working on right now. It's not something that's pervasive across the system. So, just knowing that helps have, understand what some of the underlying problems are. So, I don't mean to focus on, you know, the places where you've got a lot of work. You've done a lot of good work in this, and I really appreciate having such a comprehensive report. And so we want to applaud the good work you're doing. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks for your question.
Thank you. Dr. Yarate.
I haven't had a chance to look at the full report, but, you know, it really looks, I mean, just eyeballing, it looks very comprehensive. And if you don't mind, I will get back to you with specific questions. But I did want, just, you know, for us to be able to understand your presentation and also the people looking in. I had a lot of questions about what are you comparing? You do, you say a lot, a lot of times you say increased or, you know, what are you comparing to? Twenty fifteen, you know, twenty fifteen, sixteen, and what is the other?
So thirteen, we passed, the policy was passed in June, this updated policy was passed in June of 2013. And so then we defined metrics for, and in school year thirteen, fourteen, we collected baseline data on that passing of that new policy. So we are now comparing fifteen, sixteen information to the thirteen, fourteen data.
Okay. When is your next data collection?
So we alternate qualitative and quantitative reports. So, school sixteen, seventeen is a qualitative report. So we will be collecting school year seventeen, eighteen data as our next quantitative report. And at that point, we hope to have better metrics and better aligned metrics with district priorities. So, I'll just make that as a caveat, it'll, the comparison will be a little tricky if we change some things, but-
When, that includes the youth risk survey also in seventeen or eighteen?
We're doing this, the youth risk behavior survey right now is out in schools. So we'll use the data from this year probably for our next report, because we alternate, the youth risk behavior survey goes every other year as well.
Okay. I wanted to get an understanding of that very nice graph that you have with an arrow in different colors. And maybe, you know, if you could, if we could explore a little bit both ends-
Sure.
-to get a sense of what it is that you're measuring. When you say healthy school environments, give me a couple of indicators of that.
Sure. So, just look back to my notes. One, schools are required to develop integrated pest management plans. That's a, I believe is a state law. And so that would be one of the metrics. And we assess if schools have done that through something, the Centers for Disease Control has a profile survey, which is a policies, practices, and program survey. We did that last spring, and we asked principals, that would have been one of the questions we asked, did you complete that, right? And so that, and we use that profile surveys to ask a number of things. Another one was a review of their annual audit, environmental audit. The environmental audits are done by the Boston Public Health Commission. They are then posted on the websites of all of the BPS schools on an annual basis. But one of the policy requirements is that they actually be reviewed by a team at the school so that they can then make plans to call for work orders or whatever some of the improvements might be necessary because of those environmental audits. So maybe that's two. Another one for healthy school environment is we measure the number of trainings that custodial staff, food and nutrition service staff, and other staff in the district are getting around the components of the policy. We're supposed to use green cleaners, all kinds of things. So we're measuring trainings that are happening as well.
My, the reason that I'm asking is that we had a lot of testimony all last year, the last couple of years, on issues related to the quality and health issues within the school, including water, cleanliness, et cetera. So I was surprised to see that, you know, one of your top improvements-
Doing so well. It's all about the metrics, I guess, is what you could say. I mean, some of the metrics that you may be raising might not be the ones that, you know, that are currently aligned with the policy. And I do think that we're reviewing every policy area, so, you know, we should, yeah.
What you're dealing with is that you're not actually measuring what you think you're measuring, if you're, you know, if you're not tapping on things that are creating or, you know, hitting the newspaper, et cetera. Do you understand what I mean? And I, that's what is not clear from here. The other one that I had questions about was the health services. We've had a lot of testimony also about the decline in the number of health personnel that are attending in schools, nurses, et cetera. What, what is the status of health services? It also shows here as a very, as an improved area. Have, you know, has that, the fact that there have been cuts to health personnel affected health services?
Well, first, I would say that one, the metrics for health services do not include nurses per school, just to answer that. But I don't, I'm going to let Amalio turn, because I don't believe we've had cuts to our nurses. We've had increases, but-
No, actually, I think we've been, an increase in the number of nurses. I mean, I still think, you know, is there additional need? Of course. And that is one of the things that we continue to consider, because we're looking at acuity levels across schools and then making sure that we are placing the nurses in the appropriate settings. So, we continue to work on that piece. Do we have enough? No, but I, but we have seen an increase in the number of health services personnel.
Again, I mean, I'm trying to get at, trying to understand the accuracy of the measure. If, you know, health services to me is about access. Do kids have access to health services if you don't have the personnel? So I mean, that's the question that I have. What is it that we're looking at here, green and, you know, applauding, and, or should we be worried about or concerned about the status of health services in the schools? Okay, I, oh, I'm, that's all I'm-
I'll just point to, which you can look at it, we do have the list of metrics for each policy area available so that you can see what those are and consider those. And I think, you know, we hear you, the metrics are the most important piece. That's why we feel like it's really important that we go back to that. And when we come back to you in June, I hope that we can share you the metrics as well as the policy, and then then, you know, maybe get any feedback that you might want to share around that.
For example, I think that including students in the development of those metrics and not, you know, not identifying, but in identifying what are specific metrics that you should be looking at. Because, I mean, just asking you about those two and in both cases, what you were telling me is that, no, that was not something that we were measuring. So that, you know, I think we need to really explore what it is that we're looking at and how accurate it is that we're measuring, what you're saying we're measuring. My last question is about slide number eleven, and I also wanted to follow up on Alex's question about cultural proficiency. What exactly is being measured here? What, you know, it's the amount of training, you say that it has increased from what to what? And what about the training? Who's getting trained for what? And how are you measuring improvements in cultural proficiency?
Sure. So, school committee, I just wanted to point you to appendix D in the annual report. Each of the metrics are in there around, there are four key metrics in cultural proficiency, though it has source for each one of those key metrics. Please correct me if I'm wrong, there was a pretty comprehensive process that was in place to come to a community-wide agreement on each one of these metrics. And if you could speak to, when is the, this year, I believe, there will be a reconvening and reassessment of all this, and then if there are any changes that will need to be made that we brought back forth.
Absolutely. Yes, is the, each subcommittee was charged with coming up with metrics that, for each policy area, based on what we thought we could deliver data on a regular, sustainable way. I think that as a district, we've gotten probably better and better tools in the last number of years, and we think we're going to be able to provide better metrics. But, and it will be through this policy process, revision process, that we'll be updating. This was the number one thing that the District Wellness Council and the subcommittees came back with, as, you know, we really need better metrics. So, really, we look forward to engaging with anybody who thinks they have specific metrics they'd like to see. We really are open to that.
Yeah, I do. In fact, I mean, looking at your metrics for cultural competence, there's nothing here that tells me the ability of the communication, I mean, the language capacity in each of the schools. Or, you know, your four metrics are, you know, percent of schools with a parent in the, you know, in the wellness council, which the wellness council don't yet exist, the percent of schools with a member of the student body, which is directed to Mr. McClay's concern, the numbers of teachers who participated in cultural proficiency training. So, I mean, that would be, that's a real, you know, cultural proficiency indicator and, or metric, and the percentage in teacher evaluation, et cetera. But I think it needs to be deeper. We need to know about what capacity really there is to attend to the needs, for example, of English language learners in different schools, or to attend to the needs of children, you know, from different cultures. If you're saying that you're supporting culturally and linguistically sustaining practices in schools, how are you doing that? Those four indicators don't tell me. Again, I mean, I'm trying to understand what you're measuring, and it seems a little soft yet.
Agreed.
And so that, you know, we need to be really looking at this with a lot of salt.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, we will take that feedback, and we will be far more sophisticated with it.
I just, I agree with all your points, but I just want to say I was part of this development. And so I think we're in the second phase now. So this was like very early before Dr. Chang even came on board. And the notion of cultural proficiency was like, ah, ah, ah. And I think this department was the first one to take it on and actually talk about it and have it. So I think we're in the next phase. I would just want to say that.
Thank you. Thank you. Dean Coleman.
Thank you very much. And I don't want to repeat what my colleague has said, because I think they made some great ideas. I want to emphasize someone, but first I want to start, this is wonderful. This is absolutely incredibly important. I am a strong believer that this is the type of work that's going to push us, leading indicators for the work we're getting, engagement and improved graduation. This is central to what we do in a proficiency, so it's very valuable. So I don't want any of my questions to be perceived as I'm not fully believing in what you're trying to do. I would, I want to emphasize, repeat the idea that these metrics are really process-oriented, and the standard's process-oriented. So in fact, these metrics are relevant to the standard you're working from. I think that's insufficient. I mean, I really want to push us towards what are the real metrics that we can really see what's going on with the school. So I'm wearing, my children made me wear this Fitbit because they're really worried that I'm going to stroke out one day, being overweight. And I watch my, I watch my process metrics all the time, and my BMI is not moving down, right? And so until we have the real data on BMI and child and asthma, and so more that we have the real hard data, I think is really critical to knowing whether we're moving forward. So building that in on a regular basis, I think is going to be very important. And I think that's my, that's my core point. And I would like it, school-based data, because then we, one of the questions we came out of the budget hearings with is this issue of what is the core program that should be in every school regardless of who's in the building? And school-level data, when we start seeing if their BMIs are not going down, what's happening in that school at a programmatic level, I think we need to see. And then the student-level data, particularly as we can break that down by demographic groups. I think that's going to be critical to our understanding about how we can use that data to drive our improvement. So it's not a gotcha, it's not about accountability and gotcha, it's really what is the data we need to know whether, are we succeeding? You know, what really are our goals? I mean, I see in the language some SMART goals, but I really want to see what in the recommendations, more hard data, I think is going to be very important, so that we can really track ourselves. So, but thank you. This is wonderful work, and I applaud it and look forward to seeing the movement forward.
Thank you. And you can find the actual student data on BMI and asthma rates, because we use nursing data in addition to some of the survey data, but I just would, I hear you.
And it would help me to see that as central to the report. So any summary report having that as part of our discipline about, you know, using data to bounce ourselves forward and the comparison data. I don't want to repeat what other people said. Thank you very much.
I echo Dean Coleman's comments that so much of this work is good and positive and moving in the right direction. So, I thank the whole council for their work and the BPS team in particular for implementing. I do have to say, when I visit schools, I'm astonished how much of my time is spent talking with team leaders about our students and quite frankly, our staff's physical, mental, and emotional health, all of which are basic building blocks. You know, our students have to be healthy. They have to be mentally at a position to learn. They have to be in a clean school environment, they have to have good food, it has to be a safe nurturing environment, it has to be culturally proficient. All these things are like basic building blocks just to get to a point where our students can actually learn and academically succeed. And yet it's so critical, and, you know, at budget time, we make such hard decisions. And, you know, a lot of conversations with school leaders that I've had recently and teachers and staff in schools is around the nursing level. And whether it's talking with nurses in schools, or whether it's talking with school leaders or talking with school secretaries, as Ms. Sullivan and I were talking with one the other day, who's given us great feedback about what happens in her school when the nurse isn't there. Guess who covers? It's the principal or it's the school secretary in many cases, right? And, you know, this is an issue, and when I think about the school nurse issue, and correct, thank you, Mr. Neves, for pointing that out, we did increase the number of nurses this year, but we're not at the point we need to be. And yet, when I think about on the school, on our students' mental health issues and the school psychologist, the incredibly creative, innovative work we're doing with Children's Hospital, thank you, Mr. Rand, for being with us today, and with UMass, together as a triumvirate, that's national-leading work that we're doing, right? So is this something we could be doing on the nursing side that is a new way to look at this? You know, when I think of all the hospitals in the city, and I know many of them do partner with us, but just- with us, but just as they're doing, as Children's is doing in particular with UMass, on our students' mental health, is there something we could be doing on the nursing side? I don't know, I'm just, I wanted to get it out here, because this is right after we make the difficult budget decisions, and, you know, do we add six nurses versus four? And then, but then, when we hear this repeatedly from our school leaders, that this is a critical issue they're facing, help me out with, you know, we have this national-leading program with UMass and Children's. Is that a model we could use in some of these other issues we're facing?
Well, I think one of the strengths of, the great strength of that model is building on partnerships, right? As you mentioned, you've got UMass, Boston Children's Hospital, BPS. And I see that we have many partners here that are willing to come to the table. So how do we look further into that and seeing, are there some creative models, as you suggested, that we can, again, engage partners in, in helping us with this work? I've asked the staff to also look at innovations in terms of medical services, how do we use technology? And we see some work being done in that field. So we're sitting in a great center of medical science. And so I think our job is, how do we tap into those community resources and forge a strong partnership?
Do we work with nursing schools? Student nurses?
I believe we, I'm...
I'm not, I'm really not sure, and I'm sorry, Maureen Stark's not here to double-check on that. We do with the psychologists, I know that for a fact, but I'm not sure about the nursing. We work really closely with, you know, the Health Commission. There's obviously, we have school-based health centers that are Health Commission, that are overseen by the Health Commission, so, and also by many other groups in the city. We have schools that partner with community health centers, not school-based, but close neighbors. So there are a lot of innovative partnerships already going on in this area, but more is what you're suggesting, and I think you're right, we're in a, we're in a spot where you think we should be able to develop other.
It's just such a critical need of our students. And, you know, what's interesting is you go around the schools and different pockets of the city, it's different health issues. So you're in East Boston, you're talking with the school nurses about asthma, right? And other places of other issues. And I know asthma is common in many places across the city, but it's always fascinating when you go around and see this. And this is, you know, we have to get to the point where our students are in a healthy condition to learn. And I think we're improving, and, but with difficult budget decisions, and we make them every single year, so it's interesting we have this conversation the week after we voted, after the last meeting on the budget.
And I was, I would say, they play such, nurses, school nurses, play such a critical role in running our school wellness teams. And so, you know, not only are they carrying out their full responsibilities, but then they're also engaging in this work and leading some of our school wellness councils.
But then we have the same thing with the school psychologists as well. You know, we're not near the average that we need to be for how many we should have relative to our students. And, you know, as I recalled in the budget season, we had at least one school psychologist coming to talk to us, and it was astonishing the number of schools that she's covering. And yet, at least there, we have the very innovative program that is bringing tremendous resources to be here. So I just encourage us to keep thinking as creatively as we can, when we look at these resources that are around us of, you know, particularly these phenomenal teaching hospitals and nursing schools around us, is there more we could do to have them involved, similar to the model what Children's is doing, of course, on the mental health issues for our students? Is there more that we could do to get nursing services to all of our schools and all of our students on a full-time basis? Because it's great, you know, I was talking downstairs during the teacher protest at the last meeting, and who do I run into at the coffee shop but the school nurse and the Edwards? And she said to me, I cover two schools, so I hope my students only get sick in the half-time that I'm at this school. And that's tough to think of at that point. So I know, you know, we're doing as much as we can, and we have increased, but the more we can think creatively about solving these problems, similar to what we heard before about the brainstorming around transportation and home-based, transportation and start times, let's keep thinking creatively about ways to solve some of these challenges. Dr. Yate, you want to say something?
Yeah, I, you know, again, I'm, I also sort of am envious that this is a wonderful report, but, you know, if you, for example, in the ELL Task Force, we get a lot of, you know, concerns from parents, you know, some people are doing, and we know that they're not getting the support that they need, you know, as immigrants, in schools, with all, everything that is going on. And so that there's a, there's a real disconnect between what I'm hearing here and what I hear in other, in other settings. And I think, you know, talking, you know, thinking about what Michael just said, you know, if we don't name the problems, it's very hard to solve them. You know? And I, you know, if we look at everything with rose-colored glasses, it's very hard to understand what the problem really is. And I think that's what I'm sort of struggling with, you know, how to, how to support you, but at the same time, recognize that there's, you know, it's a huge gap between what's in here and what we're actually hearing when we talk to people in the schools.
Okay. So, on that note, I want to take a moment, and we have a number of members of the council here. Do you mind if they please stand, so they can be recognized for their, for their hard work? And what their... I thank all of you for your time, both whether you're with BPS or not. We have some incredible partners in the room, and the work that you do to improve our students' physical, mental, emotional health is astonishing, and make sure that they're in safe, welcoming environments. So thank you for all for your work on this issue, and we look forward to when you come back in June.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on now, actually, Dr. Neves is going to stay with us, right? And we'll move on to our final report, an update on the Code of Student Conduct. He'll be joined by Operational Superintendent Al Taylor Jr., Executive Director of Office and Data Accountability, Nicole Wagner-Lamb, and I believe Superintendent Chang is, we have some, I'd like to invite you to make some opening comments.
Actually, the presentation will be done by Amalia Neves and Al Taylor. Nicole Wagner and Lamb will support as needed. Tonight, we will provide the school committee an update on how implementation of the district's Code of Conduct has helped us lower suspension rates and provide appropriate supports for students over the past four years. When students are suspended, they are losing opportunities for learning. That's very clear. Suspensions contribute to the exclusion of students from their usual educational setting. And as you all know, exclusionary practices contribute to decreased academic achievement and involvement in the juvenile justice system. Last year, BPS convened local and national leaders to learn from each other and to analyze BPS's data. And this year, BPS and the city of Boston will be hosting the Aspen Institute's Opportunity Youth and Collective Impact convening the week of May 22nd. I want to be very clear, the headline for this presentation, I'm going to give you a sneak preview, is that the data shows that our suspension rates have been declining across all subgroups since 2012 and 2013. Teachers and staff across multiple departments are placing a major focus on individualized student supports and positive behavioral interventions. That's a positive news. Unfortunately, Black and Latinx students, as well as students with disabilities, continue to be suspended at higher rates than their white and Asian peers, so that opportunity achievement gap is not closing the way we need it to. So I just want to recognize that out front. We have taken deep strides in prevention intervention overall, but the data does focus, does reveal that the most marginalized youth needs to be our primary focus. This work is a, has to be a collaboration between Central Office and schools. That's why it's very purposeful that both the operational superintendent and the Central Office Assistant Superintendents are co-presenting here. We also asked for some of our incredible school leaders that have stayed till this late part of the evening. We've asked some of our school leaders to come as well, to share about some of their successes and some of their challenges. So we're going to be very reflective, very transparent in this presentation, and I want to recognize that we have a lot of work to do in this area on the front end. So I'll turn it over to you guys. Thank you.
Good evening again, Chairman O'Neill, Dr. Chang, and members of the school committee. As we begin to think about tonight's presentation, I went back to the Code of Student Conduct that you all approved last year, and really thinking, reflecting on the guiding principles that were stated there, which really sets the why for this presentation. And really, that this work is about creating safe, healthy, and welcoming school environments for all of our students, and that this is just a continuation of the previous presentation, how do we do this? But that this work includes the adoption of prevention, positive approaches to discipline that supports students in building social, social-emotional, and behavioral skills, helping students to resolve conflicts in a nonviolent manner, and how do we create productive learning environments? And that, as Dr. Chang pointed out, this is not the work of just one department or one individual, but that it really takes an entire team, and not just inside of BPS, but we know that this work has to be done in collaboration with our students and with our families. And creating healthy, safe, healthy, and supportive school environments with collaborative services, and we've talked a little bit about that tonight, is a necessary foundation for improving our educational outcomes for students, especially for those students who are facing behavioral challenges. And as Dr. Chang pointed out, that the approach is through many levels. First of all, through promotion, making sure that our schools foster the emotional well-being of all students school-wide, or through school-wide approaches to positive behavioral health. Prevention, that we're providing supports to intervene early to minimize escalation of behavioral health symptoms, again, through collaborative supports. And intervention, that schools provide and participate in coordinated care for the small number of students who demonstrate a greater need. And Al's going to talk about that a little bit later. And again, we're not doing these things in silos, but that these activities are coordinated in a fashion, and that are happening throughout those schools, so that we're meeting the needs of each and every student. One piece that I want to read that comes straight out of the Code of Conduct, that I really sets the frame for our belief system, is the following. "The code shall be aimed at creating a safe and supportive whole-school environment, supporting the social and emotional development of all students, and teaching alternatives to violence and respect for all members of the school community. By viewing social development as a critical aspect of a school's responsibilities, schools shall anticipate and respond to school disciplinary matters in a manner that is consistent with students' sense of dignity and self-worth. The purpose of discipline must be to understand and address the causes of behavior to resolve conflicts while teaching new skills and repairing the harm done, restore relationships, and reintegrate students into the school community. In addition, particular attention and intervention support shall be provided to vulnerable families and youth at risk of being excluded from school." So this work is so important that, again, that as we do this, that we are approaching it from that view. So our objectives tonight are really to provide the school committee an update on disciplinary data, to inform you on our recent initiatives since we were last here, to highlight bright spots throughout BPS, and we have some wonderful school leaders here to talk about the great work being done at their school, and then to share with us some of our, the future direction of efforts to address school conduct and discipline. And again, just framing this presentation, that again, we recognize that there is still work to do, and that we know that some of our most marginalized students, and the data's going to show that, again, consistently, our students of color are disproportionately impacted by that, by suspensions, and we recognize that. But we also recognize that although we are doing some gains, we still have work to do. And again, taking us back to our instructional vision, that it is our belief, and we boldly called this out in our strategic plan, that, again, educators will create safe, healthy, and welcoming learning environments that affirm our students' unique cultural and linguistic So I'll turn it over to Al.
When we last presented, we talked a little bit about professional development, some of the social and emotional wellness initiatives, the BPS care initiatives, restorative justice, strengthening Tier One behavioral supports and resources. We talked a little bit about MTSS, data monitoring, and some of the work that's being done in some of the advisory councils.
And one of the things I can say is that since we were last here, these were some of the things we were already thinking about, and we've already made great strides in many of these pieces, launching a new safe and welcoming schools department, and having safe and welcoming school specialists to work with our schools. We've had not just one social-emotional learning and wellness conference, but now the second one that Dr. Chang highlighted tonight. So again, since we, last year, we've made progress in these areas, and we'll speak further about that.
We do want to show that this is a continuum of care for the whole school and for the whole child. This slide here depicts various different wraparound services from all various different BPS departments and BPS partners. We know that it takes a whole team to really provide supports for all children, and this slide sort of highlights that, that work. I'm going to ask Nicole to come.
Great, thanks, Al and Amalia. So as you all know, the contribution that the Office of Data and Accountability plays here is to really help these teams to monitor their data, and so we're coming to you with some suspension rate information over time, as you can see. And Dr. Chang mentioned earlier that our single-student out-of-school suspension rates have been going down over time. You can see that in the 2012-13 year, 6.2% of all students in BPS were suspended, received an out-of-school suspension at least once in that school year, whereas now, over the, in the last couple of years, we've had lower than a 5% single-student suspension rate, so that's definitely a decrease, but really, in the last couple of years, we've sort of Here, we've broken the data out, the single-student suspension rates for ethnic subgroups for the same years, and hopefully you can see that the purple line demonstrates the data that we just looked at for all students in BPS. And so above that, you can see that the suspension rates specifically for African-American or Black students are considerably higher than that, so that really speaks to the point that Dr. Chang and these two gentlemen have already mentioned, which is that we do know that there are specific subgroups of students who are being suspended at higher rates than the average here in BPS. Hispanic or Latino students are also being suspended at rates that are higher than white and Asian students. So when we think about some of the gaps that we know are present here in BPS, you know, we know that there are many different data points that help us to understand why that is. Again, here we have some other selected populations. So at the very top of this graph, you see the suspension rates for students with disabilities, again, have been decreasing over time, certainly, but in the last couple of years, we've plateaued in terms of the decrease in suspension rates in most of these subgroups. And so really, what's notable here is that there are a few subgroups of students that we all sort of know heuristically are the students that we are, are struggling on a series of different levels in terms of that bearing out in our achievement and opportunity gaps, but definitely students with disabilities. Our male students, low-income and economically disadvantaged students all have suspension rates that are a bit above the, or somewhat above the district average. And why this is important is because ultimately, it turns out that students who are suspended, especially out-of-school suspensions, but even in-school suspensions, these students are losing out in instructional time. And so this graphic is a little bit difficult, it's got a lot packed in here, and I don't, I don't want to get too tongue-tied over it, but it's essentially trying to show that, you know, as you remember, the suspension rates in 2015-16 were approximately 5% of student, of all... rates in 2015-16 were approximately 5% of student, of all students were suspended, and so you can see that in the left-hand bar. And so just breaking up that group of students into a little bit smaller proportions and looking at, you know, what proportion of students were actually suspended just for one day out of the entire school year. So this is, you know, how much they, how much instruction they missed versus students who may have been, experienced some sort of suspension, either two to three days in the school year, four to seven days, eight-plus days. What is a little bit difficult to see here is that, you know, even though some of the other subgroups who are represented here, students with disabilities, African-American, Black students, male, economically disadvantaged, their suspension rates on average are higher, and so the number of instructional days that are being lost to suspension are greater. The actual proportion of students in those subgroups that are being suspended, you know, for one day versus two and three days and four to seven days, it actually is pretty consistent across the subgroups. So that's one thing, you know, I think that, that's true of this data, but ultimately, at the end of the day, we do know we still have some challenges here. And then finally, just wanted to kind of break this data out also by the various grade levels that our students are in as, as, you know, discipline issues come up. And so we are showing, actually, this, this data is not official in any way. It's not data that is yet reported by the state, and suspension rates are definitely reported publicly by our state each year, but this is just a snapshot of literally where we are in time right now, and the number of suspensions that are captured in our student information system by grade level. And so you do see that the number of suspensions that are received by students in sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth grade are higher than the rest of the grades represented here. And so I think the patterns are fairly evident there.
This next slide just shows you some of our current initiatives and how they are tied in with the five focus areas of the district's Strategic Implementation Plan. So we're not going to go over everyone, but we thought that Al and I on this slide would just share some highlights from each of the focus areas. So around focus area number one, just wanted to share with you that one thing that we're really excited about is that in the next month or so, we will be releasing Boston Public Schools Social Emotional Learning Standards district-wide, and really beginning to develop professional development and rolling that out district-wide. And the other piece is to highlight the work of, again, we talked about it in the previous presentation, but the Safe and Welcoming School Specialists, our school psychologists, our pupil adjustment counselors, the work being done in SUCCEB Boston, formerly CIC, and all these individuals working, again, to address a student behavior, whether that be prevention, intervention, or intense intervention.
And as my colleague mentioned, if you look across focus area number two, in terms of supporting the needs of students, you can see the various different programmings that we are deployed to schools around trying to help schools solve some of the socio-emotional and some of the other behavioral issues that are, that have been teased out.
In focus area three, as we mentioned in our intro, engaging various stakeholders is critical, and our Code of Conduct Advisory Committee has been instrumental in helping us to do some problem-solving with the work. Susan Mace Rothstein, who is the chair, I'd like to acknowledge her, and Elizabeth McIntyre, who is the co-chair, I've met with them today, and really, again, they have some great ideas for partnering with BPS and, again, for alternatives to exclusionary practices. And so we continue to engage them in the work. The work of the School-to-Prison Pipeline Steering Committee that we began last year, and this group has been instrumental. We just had a big event here in this space last week, and again, many community partners that are engaged and want to help us in this work. And we've made some great strides also with students who have gone into the juvenile justice system and work and strengthen our partner with the Division of Youth Services so that we can ensure that there are smooth transitions for our students back to school.
In focus area number four, in terms of developing central office supports, Nicole's department, the Office of Data and Accountability, has created some data dashboards. It helps us monitor some of the things that are going on in schools, the operational leaders and the operational superintendents, sort of monitor attendance on a monthly basis as well as suspension rates, and then are able to meet as a team and decide how to deploy and help support schools. We also look across TLTs and the TLT liaison meetings, so there are two different forums where we monitor the data and then decide how to help support schools.
And in focus area five, as you may recall, a couple of weeks ago, I was, had the honor of presenting with my fellow assistant superintendents and, and also our finance office on the long-term financial plan and our MTSS implementation plan for literacy and socio-emotional learning and behavior. And so this is a piece that we're all excited about, that, again, as we continue to put in systems in place that will focus on supporting our students to develop not just behaviorally but socially and emotionally. And also an exciting partnership with Boston After School and Beyond with our Partnerships and SELL Initiative, which is, right now, currently a planning grant that was given to us by the Wallace Foundation to really establish a protocol for ensuring that socio-emotional learning not just occurs during school time but out-of-school time. And so these are just some of the efforts, although there are many more I'm sure that we've missed, but we wanted to highlight these pieces for you.
In sharing bright spots, I would like to introduce Principal Gondiago from the Sarah Greenwood, Principal Rollins from Mildred Avenue, and Principal Dominica Knoll from the Mary Lyons High School. They will share some of the practices and strategies that they use.
Buenas noches, School Committee. Good evening, School Committee. My name is Carla Gondiaga. I'm the principal of the Sarah Greenwood School. If you're not familiar, we are in Dorchester, and we are a K-1 through 8th grade school. We have a strand for students with emotional impairments, and a strand with students with specific learning disabilities, and also a dual-language strand. And we serve, I think right now, we keep getting students, but I think about 503 students right now. We keep growing, which is a good sign. When I took on the principalship in July 1st, I met with Dr. Tommy Chang and expressed my concern for the disproportionality and really alarming rate of suspension that the school had. We had about a 14% suspension rate, and Dr. Chang and the executive committee, they really saw this as a huge issue, and they supported me by adding another administrator to my team. My administrative team is here, and I was able to hire Cynthia Jerez, who is from the neighborhood and is also bilingual, to support, and Amanda Washington, who is also here, and she's been a member of the community for a long time, and I could not do any of this work without them. I am, it's bittersweet for me to report that we went from 14% to a little bit less than 4%. It's great because it's such a huge improvement, but I really want that number to go to zero. That is the goal. And, thank you. And I could talk a lot about the restorative justice practices that we've been doing, and also other practices that are really, really simple, like changing the entrance of the school to a more welcoming entrance, making sure that there's people greeting at the door, saying Buenos dias in the morning. Also, when, when I see students in the hallway, they have this really interesting reaction to administration of, they think that they're going to get in trouble, and I'm going to ask them for a pass, but instead I ask them, "How are you doing? How's your day?" And that's a huge change in climate. But something that I think captures really well the change at the Greenwood is what the, our PE teacher, Cunta Barros, was doing with his free time in the morning. So the previous administration had Cunta Barros, who is one of two men of color in our school, spending his mornings going to all of our classrooms from K-1 to 8th grade, checking students' uniforms, and carrying a bag with him. If a student was not in uniform, they would miss recess and get detention. This includes students in grades as low as K-1 that do not dress themselves. And these are the types of exclusionary practices that, you know, a student comes to school and that is their first interaction, and it is an interaction with somebody that looks like them, one of the few people in the building that looks like them. And so I'm very happy to report that with his free time, Cunta Barros now does not do that, and he runs restorative justice circles for our boys that really, really need extra support. And so this is just a snapshot of one of many initiatives that we're doing at the Greenwood in order to make school somewhere where there's student voice and student ownership and where they are happy, because that's really the goal. And I tell my students every day that I work for them, but there's a lot of mindset shift because just this morning, students were outside waiting for the doors to open, and a couple of them saw me, and they were cold, and it was kind of drizzly, but their first reaction was to take their hoods off. And I do not want to work in a school where a student is outside in the drizzling rain, and they feel like that's their reaction to an administrator, and so there's definitely a lot of work to be done. I also want to give a huge shout-out to Norm Townsend, my operational superintendent. He is, you know, he is my rock, and he's just always there. And also to Dr. Carla Estrada, who has come to our events and supports us, as well as Dr. Francis Esparza. It means a lot to our community that they show up. It means a lot that there is a connection with central office. And lastly, I would love to invite all of you, we are taking over the bowling building on May 25th. Kids are going to be here, they're going to be Latin drumming, and those are the kinds of connections that we want to make so that they feel proud and they feel like they own their building. So, yeah.
Principal Rollins?
Director Gondiaga, gracias por su trabajo y su dedicación a nuestras familias y estudiantes.
Good evening, School Committee. Good evening, Superintendent Chang. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and talk on behalf of our committed, talented staff and our 523 wonderful students. It's 522 as of yesterday, about 523 as of this morning.
Not that you're tracking.
So we're going to talk about two things real quickly. One, just some of the kind of environmental operations and like scheduling changes that we've made, which is not probably the most exciting topic, but has really gone a long way in transforming our school culture. And then talk a little bit about mediation groups that we run when things don't go quite so well. So I was going to walk you through just an example for our 8th grade, along with 7th grade. I don't know what the data says, but anecdotally, those are definitely some grade levels that generally bring some challenging behaviors with them. Looking back to three years ago and even just two years ago, we were encountering a lot of problems with cutting class, cutting school. Tardiness was fairly common, conflicts in hallways, conflicts in the cafeteria, bullying also oftentimes cropping up in the cafeteria. At that time, the schedule our 8th graders were looking at when they arrived in the morning, they generally waited outside for anywhere from about 20 to 25 minutes before the doors opened. When they did come in, they'd head up to their classes, and then they, they would travel throughout the building, so they would go from math on the top floor to specialty on the ground floor, then back up to social studies, then the lunch, to ELA. It was good for fitness levels, they were getting a lot of steps in, but it was kind of a logistical nightmare and led to just kind of a lot of disorganization. Students had specific specialty classes assigned to them, they ate lunch with 5th grade at that time, with about almost 200 students in the cafeteria at one time, did not have recess, and generally throughout the day, they were often generally in pretty large classes, near max, and only saw each one of their teachers like once a day. Working with our team and our wonderful teachers over the last three years, and it's been a work in progress, we've changed a lot in our schedule. So now we greet all our students as soon as they show up in the morning, they come in, have some time to sit, relax, and eat breakfast. Then they head up to their classes, and all of their core academic classes are right next to each other. They do all of their core academic classes in the morning. We extended classroom blocks to 75 minutes to give more time for student-centered learning, and then also to cut down transitions. And the core academic team for 8th grade, they meet together every day, they have common time off, they work in adjacent classrooms, so it just created a small feel within a very large building. If you've ever been out to the Mildred Avenue, it's, it's a very large campus, so we've been able to carve out a kind of small community feel. They go to lunch as a grade level with only 70 students in lunch, and it is actually, believe it or not, pretty calm with 8th graders in lunch on a Friday afternoon. They then have 15 or 20 minutes of recess to be able to get out some extra energy and to run, break a sweat, run around. Some just use the time to talk and, and meet with friends, but it's a fun time during the day. Then they go to intervention classes where they are often in groups as small as five or six, and as big as maybe 10 or 11 or 12 students. So they get that tight connection with their, their peers, and then also with a teacher, staff member at that time. And then finally, at the end of the day, they go to specialty class where our outstanding specialty team has created a choice system over the last few years for our 7th and 8th graders. So our students are able to spend the final hour of the day really doing something that they're passionate about, whether that's singing, dancing, painting, swimming, playing basketball, whatever it might be. Overall, it's just created a much kind of smaller, more personalized feel within a relatively big school. Our students spend their most focused hours in those morning hours, really digging into their core work, and it just has created a far more organized, calm environment for students where students aren't slipping through the cracks. And as you can imagine accordingly, you know, cutting of school has gone down to, from being like an everyday problem to basically a nonexistent problem. Cutting class is very rare. Occasionally, we got to give some directions out, but students get to their classes and they're locked in and focused. And students have responded well, too, because it provides a pretty structured environment for them, but one where they know their teachers and staff members care and are constantly there to support them. And then there's also time within their day that's literally carved out for them to have fun, to pursue a passion. It's not just learning, you know, in a very rigid way. So it's resulted in far, far fewer disciplinary problems or behavioral challenges. When things don't go well, we've been investing in mediation groups and mediation agreement contracts with students, especially, we've been using it a lot over some social media issues that sometimes often happen at, at home, but we need to work on it. Mr. Braga, who's my director of operations, works with the other school, is going to let you know a little bit more about that.
Good evening, Superintendent Chan. Good evening, School Committee. Just to reiterate, sorry, sorry, just to reiterate what Mr. Rollins was discussing, we started to implement a mediation agreement, and essentially, the idea behind that was to reduce reoccurring conflicts between students and stop conflicts from becoming more severe, just kind of going up the ladder. The structure of the mediation agreement is two students, max, in the mediation, an onsite counselor that we work with, and then an administrator, so the four of us in one room together. And the meeting's very structured. We begin with an introduction that's completed by the counselor, and she just gives an overview of the mediation, what we intend to achieve from the mediation, and then the end goal. Then each student gets an opportunity to speak, kind of to discuss how they feel, why they feel that way, why they feel wronged. And then the counselor, the students, and then the administrator come up with a list of items to agree upon. Some of those items could start with giving each other a little bit of space, not speaking badly about each other. Some of those items could start with giving each other a little bit of space, not speaking badly about each other and remaining safe. And then the students sign the agreement at the end of the mediation. And then we check in periodically with the students to see how things are going. If there's other talk going on or there's talk between other students, just to make sure that the conflict is decreasing. So what if we saw, we've seen kind of a very big on-the-ground decline in reoccurring issues. And it has really provided us students with an opportunity to let situations go because the conflict is put out there amongst the whole. So we all know about it, we all can address it and we all can begin to create steps to heal and move forward and to get back to what's most important and that's academics. And then just one final thing, it's been a huge success with the ongoing items with social media and keeping up with those things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Principal Dominique Ano?
Good evening, thank you. I know that I was referred as Principal Dominique Ano, many of you know me as Herve. Jean Dominic is my first name, Herve is my middle name and all of my students, everybody else, recognize me as Herve. Thank you for having me tonight to share with you some of the things that we have done at the Merrill Lyon High School. I know that by this time last year, we were cited by the state as being one of the schools that disproportionately suspended students with color. And I am glad and I'm proud to report that this time last year, about 13 students were suspended from my school, 12 of which were African-American students or Latino students. This year, as we speak, only one student was suspended from school and no African-American or Latino students. We invested three years ago in a restorative practice. And one of the things that we did was to try to achieve a paradigm shift. The Lyon High School is a fully inclusive school for students with emotional and behavioral disability. And as you can imagine, when things don't go well, students resort to physical education. And as human beings, our natural instinct, when things like this happen, is to punish students. So we went from a prison of punishment to a prison of restoration. And that is what restorative justice was able to achieve for us. We started by having one teacher trained and then their student support be trained. And this year, the whole entire staff is practicing restorative practices in every classroom. Last week, we extended to a restorative approach to classroom instruction and intervention. If you come to my school tomorrow at 11:20, which is advisory for us, the whole school will be engaged into some restorative circles led by students, not by teachers. That's to tell you the level of investment that students and the staff had. And when you also come to the school, when students display poor behavioral patterns, rather than inviting their parents to come to a suspension hearing, we invite their parents to come to a restorative circle. You can imagine, the first time that we did, we were very nervous because you have opposing parties. Students just got into a fight and we invite their parents rather than, you know, holding the hearing. We invite them to come and have a circle and discuss about how things happen and what are the things that we need to do. Quite frankly, it is a process that is hard, it takes time. I remember last week when we had parents and their students come to our school for a big circle, it took us two hours. But it was a time well invested. Because you can imagine had the students been suspended for fighting, their adults would have been happy. Everybody else would have been happy. But the emotional output would still be there for the students. And they will return to school still being mad about what happened. Not only they thought their emotional energy was so high, they also got suspended and so they mad. Engaging in a restorative circle really decreased that level. And at the end, it was fabulous to see students that you wouldn't have imagined would embrace, going and embracing and understanding what they think that they are doing. So that is what we've been doing in our school.
Principal Herve, if I may also add, I remember visiting your school and hearing about the practicing of mindfulness practices and also some of the ways that the environment has been recreated to create more kind of de-escalation spaces for students. Can you talk a little bit about use of furniture and all that stuff as well?
It is, one of the things that actually two of our teachers brought to school was mindfulness. And again, during the advisory, we have different group and really taking time to sit down with the students and have a healthy mindset before starting the school day or after that. And when you also go into the classroom, rather than organizing ourselves in a cemetery role, so to speak, the classroom might change, that will be conducive to a group environment, conducive to a group work. And we took that idea from that restorative circle whereby everybody sits in the circle, everybody is visible. There's no barriers between students and teachers. And so that everybody truly understands what is at stake and what are the things that they need to do to improve the cultural, the climate, so to speak, of the school.
Thank you for sharing that as well. I do ask our school leaders not, we so appreciate that you're here. Please don't go too far because members may have some questions right at the end of the presentation. As much as I know, you want to get some sleep because the bell comes early in the morning.
I want to now invite a BSAC student to talk a little bit about the student app and its effect on how it helped decrease. Her name is Hiba Walim.
Hi, so my name is Hiba Walim, I am a BSAC member. BSAC has four subcommittees, one of them being the dismantling school to prison pipeline. Back in 2014, we started working on an app, a student rights app, but officially launched it May 2015. There have been close to 13,000 visitors coming into the website and 10,000 users. Since this school year began, we've had three, over 3,000 users and 4,200 visitors, 25% of them being returning visitors and 75% of them being new ones. Some of the challenges we face are how do we get students to get on the app without violating the policy, the cellphone policy and getting in trouble? We want to review the BPS cellphone policy for BPS so that we can get a more appropriate time for students to get on without them getting in trouble for violating it. We want to work with the district leaders to get this time set up or like to help us review this policy and how we can go about it so that students can be a lot more comfortable going to the app to check their rights. So promoting the app, we've been working on promoting the app to ensure students and parents understand their rights and understand and how it will be helpful when they're advocating for themselves. Also, that any information the school, the student submits into the website is completely confidential and they would not be getting in trouble for submit something about like they would post about their principal or like a teacher violating their rights. The app has videos that shows students and parents how to work the app, how to use it and how now the app is available in Spanish, which is very, very helpful for immigrant students. And we also added pages regarding equity and undocumented students. So we ask of you, I would like you guys to download the app on your phones if you don't already have it and help us promote the app because one of the many advantages of the app is that the student knows their right. And when they do know their right, they know what's right and what's wrong. And we can stop the situation from like exceeding to the point where a student is suspended and we can reduce the suspension rates. For the iPhones, it's available on the web and for the Android users, there's an app for it. Thank you.
Great work.
Thank you. So Malia is going to talk through some next steps.
And I just, as you can see, this work again, as I mentioned, is the work of many individuals who contribute to really addressing this. I want to acknowledge Maria Ortiz, who works with us and helps us with student efforts on BSAC. So next steps. We know that we still have a lot of work to do. And next is really developing some professional learning opportunities that will focus on examining the suspension data, addressing subgroup disproportionality and alternatives to suspension for particular schools. So looking at the data, what is the data telling us, where do we need to provide greater levels of support? Continue to support schools in establishing safe, healthy and welcoming schools that promote restorative practices. So again, as you heard Headmaster Ano talk about, that's a strategy that has been used and has worked well in his environment. As I've spoken with COCAK, what we want to make sure is that as schools are promoting restorative practices, that we are establishing guardrails around what that practice should look like in schools. So that again, we are doing things with fidelity of implementation. Also, further building on prevention and intervention, including the rollout of self standards, curriculum and professional development. And when we talk about social emotional learning, but looking at social emotional learning is not just solely about behavior. There's an academic side to social emotional learning that we focus on explicit instruction of the skills to students. And that another key piece of social emotional learning is the integration of social emotional learning into math, language arts, into every aspect of the school day. But although we know that many teachers, many school leaders are already doing this, how do we do it with greater intentionality, calling it out explicitly as we promote and practice the competencies? And we know that again, much professional development needs to happen in this area. And I'm working with my team and with the operational superintendents and leaders to make sure again that learning is getting out to schools. Working very closely with COCAK to revisit the code of conduct and engaging again many of the folks that have been at the table working with us, including our operational superintendents and leaders, looking at the code of conduct so that we're aligned with state and federal requirements. And again, this work with the code of conduct committee to review the data, the trends, and so that they can provide guidance to BPS. When I was speaking with Susan, Mace Rothstein, she has, the team has many wonderful ideas. And again, about how do we map our alternatives to suspensions? What are some best practices that are out there? And then how do we create professional development for some of those strategies that we believe are important? And they've got other ideas and so again, continuing that work with them so that we can implement some of those strategies.
If I may, Chairman, really quickly, thank you Amal and thank you Al for your presentation. School committee members, I've never, I have visited school districts across the country. I've never seen a school district that feels so passionately across the system, from school leaders to parents, to students, central office, around issues of creating safe and welcoming environments in every single space in a school district. I just want to commend everybody that's committed to this sort of work. Number two, that list of initiatives is so extensive and everybody in the school system is trying and dedicated to this work. If you look at that list, we are trying to create coherence, but we also know that to reach every single student, it's going to require a lot of different work. It's an incredible list of work. I know it's so incredible, it's like in five-point font. And that which, and the last thing is, we've got to be, this is the most important point. We've got to lead this work, not with accountability, but with capacity ability. It's very dangerous to lead this work with accountability because what you ultimately may be doing, you might be actually contributing exclusionary practices, but there's nothing on that list that is around accountability. It's around building capacity of those who work in our system to actually do this work the right way. So I want to thank everybody who came together, helped put this presentation together to provide you then update about this very important work that we're doing. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you all for presenting. I'm going to open it out to members for questions, comments. Mr. McCray? Ms. Oliver Dabila?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I really want to also acknowledge all the school leaders that were here, listening to you. Made this report much easier to swallow some of this data, which is very, I know we've gone down, but it is disturbing and alarming. And I agree with Principal Gandiaga that we need to get to zero. And so I just wonder, one of my questions is around our goal for bringing that percentage down. And then my other question is around, well, let me just stop with that and then I'll...
Okay. If I may, really quickly, the goal has to be zero. I mean, we have too many young people who are being suspended. So I think the way, I would love to hear from Al and the operational superintendent, how you are looking at the data of school by school by school to ensure that each school, we're supporting schools to get to zero.
So as some of my colleagues mentioned, we review data twice a month. The operational superintendents and the operational leaders in one forum and then the ISs in the liaison forum. We sort of tease out trends and then quickly consult with principals to kind of get a more context about how we can help reduce their suspension rates. And then we deploy from all of these various different initiatives that you see listed here.
So I know we want to get to zero, but I assume we're not going to get to zero next year. If we are awesome, that's just what I want to know. If we're getting to zero next year when we meet at this time, then I'm, you know, I'm all behind that. My other question is, when I looked at the list of what students are being suspended for, I assume the professional development includes something around that. Because when I looked at that list, the percentages, most of the offenses were not anything major. And so that was really concerning. And how are we going to actually measure that the professional development is really working?
Okay. Well, I think one of the things that we've discussed as a team is that that one category where we see a lot of subjectivity, for example, is disruption. And so one of the key pieces that we've identified for professional development, how do we help educators better understand what that means? And part of the work also is going to be the work that we're doing around culturally and linguistically sustaining practices. You know, biases sometimes impact our decisions for suspending a student or for writing a referral for a disciplinary incident. And so we've got to do a better job around identifying those pieces. And that again, as I talked about, one of our next pieces, how do, this is a data piece. So how do we take that data piece and turn it into a specialized PD to help our educators and school leaders to really get a better handle about how they're calling incidents?
Molly, can you talk about disproportionality and how that data is... Amalio, can you talk about disproportionality and how that data is looked at by school level? Or Al?
I didn't hear what you said.
Yeah. Can you talk about the disproportionality and how that data is looked at, school by school?
I'm not sure I understand your question in terms of...
Do you look, I'll be explicit, do you look at the gap between Black and Latino students being suspended versus Asian white peers by school site?
We do. We look at all of the different student groups. And there are various different things we do, depending on what the data is telling us. For example, we had a school that had a high, I won't name the school, but that had a high suspension rate around special education students. So we went out right, it was an alarming rate, and we went out right away and just tried to help them, tapping and working with the special ed office, as well as Amalio's office, some other types of resources and some alternatives to suspending those children and making sure that they weren't being suspended if some of the behavior was based on their disability. So just really checking those kinds of things and working with schools to better equip them. Amalio alluded to some of the work we're doing around helping teachers with classroom management. And you heard some of the principals talk about some of the restorative things that they're doing, that helps sort of change the mindset and being able to better deal with defiance. I know your concern was like the rate of the suspensions around things that aren't categorized, but it's more around defiance and really helping teachers work with that. And as Amalio alluded to, like some of the cultural differences, what may be defiant, to me, might not be defiant to Amalio in terms of culturally speaking and helping folks understand those kinds of things as well.
And thank you, Dr. Chang. That was one of my questions around the schools, and if you saw patterns and how you actually were working with those particular schools. So I would like to think that everybody's coming from a good place. We all want to think that. I just wonder if there is a way, as we move forward and we say, oh, this is the initiative that we want to work on, and then everybody rallies around that, how do we know that even if we bring down the suspension rates, that students aren't being pushed aside? So it's a larger question that you probably can't answer right now, but I'd like to know more about how it is that we're going to determine, like, let's say, all the suspension rates are gone, we get to zero, but there's still students on the fringes? So how do we really know that just because we don't have suspension rates, students are not disconnected?
So I think that...
Well, I just want to quickly say, and I don't mean to jump in, but I mean, there are other data points that we do triangulate. And so, you know, we were talking about even this evening, that, you know, when we think about the school-to-prison pipeline and the work that we've done there together, you know, for those who have been involved in that work, it's clear that we're looking at a whole series of data points to try to get a sense for students who are really at risk. And you use the term marginalized. And so, for example, looking at chronic absenteeism rates and things like that, you know, it is difficult to know exactly if a student's chronic absenteeism rate is a result of the fact that they're sort of being excluded without a suspension actually being reported. But there are definitely other data points that we do use and that we should be using to understand that continuum.
School climate, very important.
Well, but the school climate, not everybody fills it out. So I think that's also like the...
We're doing better. We will get there.
Excellent. Good.
And I think a piece of this also is, as we do this work, are we, how are we engaging our students academically? And that's a key piece, because always, a lot of times, the discussion will come, is the behavior a result of me struggling academically, or am I struggling academically because of my behavior? So again, as we talk about addressing the needs of the whole child, we have to look at more than just behavior, but looking at the child socially emotionally as well as academically.
And I just wanted to say, for the Mary Lyons High School, I really appreciated that the students were doing this. So I think as we move forward, we're talking about, you know, the administrations, teachers, et cetera, but really, if we want to see change, it also has to come from the students. And I would just also say that since we always, it's a negative thing, obviously, but being able to, you know, like OAG has some small dollars they're giving out to different schools. If there's a way that for schools that are doing really well on this, to recognize them, to be able to apply for, you know, funding and be that positive deviant, so we can also celebrate our schools, that would be great.
And just to respond real quick, some of the work that we do in terms of professional development, not only do we build the capacity of the students, we also build the capacity of their parents. So I have several schools where we're doing workshops for parents around helping their kids with behavior.
And I forgot to say that. So that was really great, too, with the Mary Lyons, because that's also the question I asked when we did the Code of Conduct, is when students are being disciplined, are the families being brought in? Is it, you know, and obviously, every culture is different, and the Latino culture, we're all about bringing in the families. So I do really appreciate hearing that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Dr. Yurate.
Very briefly, this is, I always love it when, you know, school leaders come and we can actually hear from your own experience what's going on. And this was a very impressive set of presentations. I have a couple of questions about the data and the meaning of it. There's no question that there has been a decline in the overall, you know, percent of students that are, you know, that are suspended. There's also been a leveling off, as you said, in the, you know, in the last years. What are you, what do you think accounts for that?
I really believe a lot of it is some of the programs that we highlighted here and building the capacity at the school level, particularly with teachers, as well as with some of the administrators, around how they deal with some of the behavioral issues and how they help kids redirect children versus the first approach being to suspend, suspend, or punishment, but more so working around acknowledging some of the issues that children come to school with, and then trying to work them through various different things.
And what do you think accounts for the leveling? Why isn't, why isn't the trend continuing?
Well, I think one of the things that I alluded to on that last slide is, we still have some greater work now to get even deeper into the data. And where are we seeing challenges? So for example, we know there's a challenge around how we're naming incidents, that piece on disruptions. So can we do a better piece on that? I believe that the work that we're going to do on bias and culturally and linguistically sustaining practices with our teachers will help them. I think that the work around social-emotional learning and wellness, that as we continue to provide professional development and giving teachers alternatives to suspensions, that then they'll begin to use those, and then I think we'll see some of those decreases.
Okay. So then, what I'm hearing you say is that maybe you, you know, with some of the initial, you know, initiatives, it came down. So you sort of picked, you know, the fruit that was close by, and now you're really dealing with some of the more entrenched issues, so that it'll get a little bit harder, or the line will not move. What do you think, Nicole?
And to your point, I think that, you know, until we can really make a major dent in the extent to which certain subgroups of students are continuing to be suspended at higher rates, you know, it's like decreasing our achievement gap, right? Until you can really accelerate the progress that's being made with some of those subgroups, you know, we're going to see a leveling off. And I think that, you know, we haven't talked about this in a lot of depth, but you can even see it in the numbers that are reported by the state, the types of offenses that students are being suspended for in sort of the higher numbers. There's sort of two big categories. One are the ones that are, you know, like some of our principals have talked about, like really serious conflicts that are happening at the schools. So, you know, working on de-escalating those, which these gentlemen have talked about in detail, is going to be a big body of work. But also, some of the body of work around, like, just disruptive behavior, that's a different body of work in terms of trying to reduce suspensions there.
In terms of the specific reasons, there's one that stands out very, you know, like a red blinking light. Can you define what is in that bucket? Is there one that has 1,700 children? It's called other nonviolent and non-drug, noncriminal?
Actually, before we go on to that, I want to talk a little bit about this, what your question, I think is a very important one, which is like, how are we going to really close these gaps? Because these are all in terms of rates, and our students who are Black and our students who are Latino are decreasing at the same rate as our Asian and white, and their Asian and white peers, then actual number is, the number drop is actually even more significant. So there's credit there that we should be taking credit for. But in addition to that, I think the only way we're going to ultimately close this gap, the only way we're going to see even greater decrease is if we double and triple down on the work with our Black and Latino boys, I mean, and our students with disabilities. That's just got to be our focus. It can't be just tier-one, system-wide. We've got to be far more targeted with our approaches. And if you see what some of our initiatives are, the kind of new initiatives that we're putting on the table are very targeted to those subgroups. That's the only way we're going to be able to see further decrease and kind of move away from this leveling off phenomenon. Amalio answered, why don't we go on to Dr. Yurate's question? Now.
I mean, I think you may have been asking about numbers related to specific offenses, like I shared the term disruption. There, I mean, I couldn't even go into all of the different actual specific events or incidents that are reported in our student information system that are there, but as you can imagine, that's the kind of category that becomes sort of a catch-all.
A catch-all?
It does.
Okay.
And I think these gentlemen probably could speak to that and like what it really feels like at the schools.
The other comment I wanted to make that is that it was refreshing to see that, you know, all the school leaders talked about how they changed their schools rather than how they were aiming to change the children. You know what I mean? So that, I thought that that was really, really wonderful, because it is, you know, this is an institutional issue, and we need to sort of look to ourselves first. And each one of you talks specifically about how you're manipulating the environment in which the students are operating and how that is having an effect on their behavior. And that's great.
I think Amalio mentioned earlier, we also got to do a better job at sharing best practices and highlighting and mimicking some of the work in some of our other schools that have been successful and taking that work and moving it to some of the other places.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Yurate. Dean Coleman.
Great. Once again, this is really exciting, fantastic work, and I think your focus on very important issues. And I just want to point out two things, and it's a danger about giving us data sometimes. One, I want to suggest that a concept of gender organization, right? So as I remember some of the data that was reported about special needs kids and disability, there's a high percentage of African-American males in that category, often unspecified. But when you look at this data, you begin to see a lot of males. And how do we think about the gender? And how do we, as an institution, replicate theories of gender, sometimes racialized, but gender as a whole, that facilitates the ability to exclude that gendered behavior from our classrooms? I want to put gender on the table, big and large, because it's there. And I think we talk a lot, race a lot, and I think, not, and obviously, I think that's important, but let's get back to the gender, because I think going back with Dean Robinson earlier, we had this wonderful reorganization represented in Boston Debate League, of these women being assertive and thoughtful and winners in debate and talk about, oh, isn't this great what we've done? Well, if we reorganize that part of gender, how are we working on the others? So I want to put that on the table. And then the other slide that I think was very, number 11, doesn't look like we do transitions very well in this institution, right? So sixth and seventh grade, a huge amount drops a little bit. Well, we don't do middle school, right? We all know that, any arguments about middle school? So we're thinking about that as an idea, about these middle school ages is something we don't do well, and maybe the suspensions, look at it. And then the ninth grade suspension. So these are transition times in people's lives. And as we think about grade reconfiguration, high school redesign, you know, this whole way we manage transitions, and we all know that there's a lot of research about the problems with transitions and academic outcomes, but suspensions is actually a high time. These kids begin practicing, being adults, and they're failing at their practice. And so, and I'm going to argue that we're failing to teach males well how to be part of our community, and we're failing, and we're failing them. So just some observations. But I think the work is wonderful.
Thank you. Just wanted to share, I know that Dr. Rose's department is doing some great work through the Ten Boys Initiative, and that's one piece. And another piece that we will be implementing, beginning with the 2017, '18 school year, is the Becoming a Man program. And both programs are aimed at males, particularly males of color in this case, and that we hope that this will address some of those pieces. And once we identify how it works well in the first year, how do we look to then sustain and expand it throughout BPS?
And I'm hoping someone is cataloging this well and writing it up so we can share, not just within the system, but outside the system as well.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. Could you turn back to slide six, please? Thank you. So it was a little difficult for me to read before, so thank you. I'm glad to see that you include parents and students in the Village, in the team that works on this. So thank you for that. I did want to ask, excuse me for one second, principal, excuse me, headmaster, whoever. I've had, like many of us, I've enjoyed out visiting your school, and you're a bit of a unique school because you are full inclusion, as you talked about. But many of your students come from the K to eight.
That's correct.
Actually, really from the K to six, right? As I recall, the seven or eight are in your building, but you technically have the high school, right? So many of the students carry on, so they know each other for years. How is that dynamic a little bit different, particularly when, you know, tensions build? And, you know, one of the things about when you change schools, some kids you don't see again after a while, right? But you, you're somewhat unique where you're all the way through. So just talk about that for a sec, please, if you don't mind.
So the K eight level is a single-strand school, one class per grade. And the high school is a double-strand. So which means that one strand of the high school is coming from our own K eight level, and then we have another strand that is coming from every school in BPS. So one of the things that we do at our high school is that we have a summer institute to really try to get the kids to know each other before school starts. We also do have advisory periods for this, because as you so well noted, some of the students have been together since kindergarten. And other kids have come to our school, and for the first time, they've been in a classroom with a student who's displaying poor behavioral pattern and has been identified as a student with emotional behavioral disability. So for some of them, it's a catch or shock to see that. And so we do allow disability awareness in our school during those advisory time. And what is really remarkable now, as we utilize restorative circles and restorative practices, is to see the kid themselves leading that restorative circle, because they have seen adults do it. And so they have asked, well, could I do what you did? And so we have incorporated the kids into the practice.
Are those practices also being done in the K to six building?
So the practices have been done in a seven, seven twelve.
Which is your building?
That is my building.
But you technically, as I recall, have nine to twelve, right?
That is correct.
Right.
The high school is nine to twelve, because the seventh and eighth graders are in the building, we see ourselves as a seven, as a seven twelve. And so one of the things that we are trying to do now also with Debbie Rooney, is to have that restorative practice to be a K twelve endeavor, so that the kids really are in tune to that. So when we, last week, when we had our whole school training by the Restorative Justice Center, the middle school teachers did come to see what is going on. And actually, one of the closer leader at the elementary school level also is going into the restorative justice practices training. So we started at the high school, and it is going down to the K eight.
Because, you know, part of, we hear school leaders talking, and I thank all three of the school leaders who are with us today and members of their team, because this is so informative for us to learn how you're doing it. And as Dr. Yurate, I believe it was Dr. Yurate, said, I love that kind of you change behavior, and you're changing your schools versus trying to get your students to change. And Principal Gandiaga, what you shared with about what had happened before and what you've been putting in place now is eye-opening. And I'm wondering how we take these best practices, how the instructional superintendents take these, and operational superintendents take these... take these best practices and encourage your peers to do it. And so hearing, you know, that's why I thought of the Lyons, because it'd be natural to go right across the street to the next building, knowing how closely you work together. I do have to ask about one other issue. And that is, are we tracking, I'll call them for lack of better words, half-day suspensions or, you know, school leaders who are calling there? And I'll look at the instructional superintendents of this. The school leaders who call their, the parents and say, your child's just acting up too much today. You have to go home today.
So when we know about that, we try to stop that practice. We do not condone that. That's not appropriate, and that's not following due process.
Anecdotally, I hear it happens.
I'm not disputing. I'm just saying, when we, when a parent notifies us to that, we immediately try to meet with that principal, and we try to stop that practice.
Okay.
And this past August, during the August Leadership Institute, we conveyed that message to our school leaders that that was not acceptable practice.
Okay. I hope we continue to deliver that message. I want to thank, I don't think we have any other questions, right? I want to thank Mr. Taylor and Mr. Neves for putting this together, and our three school leaders and your teams who are with us today. So Principal Gandiago, Principal Rollins, and Headmaster Erva, thank you very much. We're delighted to hear. Headmaster, I just have to ask quickly, do you have a student who is a member of BSAC? A representative on BSAC?
We have one. I reminded him yesterday. He has not been the most, his attendance to BSAC hasn't been the greatest. But we have one.
Thank you. I know, I know you have an active, you have active parents on SPEDPAC. Do you also have an active school site council and representative to the Citywide Parents Council that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. I know that one of our parents, actually, the K-8 parent was very active in SPEDPAC.
Okay. We ask you to encourage parental involvement in the Citywide Parents Council and the same thing to the two principals, if at all possible. Do you have an active school site council and parental representative in the Citywide Parents and also in SPEDPAC that you're aware of? Okay. Great. We encourage that, if at all possible. We're trying to make sure those groups are representative of all of our schools and not a smaller subgroup of schools. So we ask every school leader who comes before us. Phil's question. Thank you very much for being here, all of you tonight.
Thank you.
That's it for presentations tonight. We'll move on to public comments and report. Ms. Oliver?
You have no speakers for public comments.
No speakers. Thank you. Any new business? I just want to bring up one quick thing on new business. And it'd be helpful, Principal Erva, while you're here, Headmaster Erva, even though, this is Superintendent Chang, if you, hold on one sec, please. Many of you may have seen as you walk out, there's a tremendous arts exhibit by our youth that is there. And including, we had a move of the mosaics due to some work going on in City Hall right out here. And I personally think it's the absolute perfect place for it. And it was a project done by the arts teacher, I believe, across the street, right? At the K-8 Deborah Manley. And I'm glad it's quoted on there, out on the plaque. But please extend her appreciation to her from us. And I hope folks get a chance to visit, because there's some tremendous art exhibits going on. Also, Superintendent, you forgot to mention, since our last meeting beforehand, that you had made two fairly significant headmaster appointments.
Yeah, I was actually going to have the group come by next school committee meeting, but since you mentioned it, two...
Okay, then we'll wait till the next school committee.
Let's do that. Let's do that.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Tanya Freedom Wisdom is our, is, I appointed her as the permanent headmaster for the John D. O'Brien School. She's alum of the school, deeply passionate, and has just such a calm demeanor about her leadership. So impressed with her. And so she, I appointed her as a permanent headmaster. Sean Guth. Is Sean ready? Has that been announced?
I was referring to the BLS appointment you had made.
And then, of course, Rachel Scarab, BLS alum, who will be coming back from Washington, DC, back to the city of Boston to be our next headmaster of Boston Latin School. She's a 1995 BLS alum. Just as importantly, a 1999 University of Pennsylvania alum, Go Quakers. And she is the first person of color to lead the school in its 380-year history.
And also the sixth graduate of the school and the third, the second alumna of the school. So thank you for that. And also, just want to let members know, we do have scheduled in May a presentation by the superintendent on the Mata Hunt School, an update both on the assignment for the students and how it is going with the planning for the Early Learning Center. Superintendent, I hope you heard those comments from earlier today from a parent. And we look forward to you directly addressing those and reporting back to us on that. Yes, Dr. Uriarte?
No, not new business, old business revisited. I think we need to have a presentation or an update on the issue related to the student assignment.
Yes, that is scheduled.
Even if it's to say we're working on it, we need a formal evaluation, a formal statement about this, because it keeps coming up. And, you know, today, we celebrate the fourth anniversary of that. But I think, I think it's a serious issue, and we need to...
Yes, and it is scheduled.
Really quickly, Dr. Uriarte, I want to thank you for your support in that effort as well. Our RFP is almost completely done.
Thank you. That concludes our business for this evening. The next school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, April 26th, at 6:00 PM. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's moved.
Made and seconded. Looks like unanimous consent. Thank you, everybody, and good night.